It's just Sean here. Just wanted to let you know that we're just waiting on the mayor to arrive, so it might be a little bit behind.
Okay, thanks for that Sean.
You bet.
You're not have to start it up. Calling the meeting to order. Remember training 1922 committee the whole only thing on the agenda is budget. So let's do this. We have fifty three motions fifty two forty or I sing it irs maybe fortyish motions. I'm hoping to get twenty done today and twenty done Thursday. Let's push it through and get it done this week. I think we can probably achieve that attendance at the start of the meeting is Natalie online. Oh, Natalie is online. So Natalie, I will also log in so I can see you. But she is so it's hundred percent attendance. We do have one registered speaker. We have Dale from Wild North is deal with us. Hi Dale, you are up first. So if you want to come up to the mic. Welcome back to our chambers. So you've been here before. You know the drill. So Dale is it you know?
You know, yes.
You know, okay, close. You know, is from Wild North. So go ahead. You have five minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors for giving the opportunity to speak here today. I was in front of council in twenty twenty one. So not that long ago requesting some funding for Wild North's wildlife services in your municipality. Now, I recognize some faces and I I know there's a couple of new faces here as well. So just a brief description of some of the services that we provide to the municipality. Wild North is a wildlife rehabilitation center. So we're one of seven in the province with the largest, the most northerly, and the only one that services this region. So basically, we take in injured and orphaned wildlife, and we do our best to rehabilitate them and get them back out into the wild. So if you're in St. Albert and you come across something that's injured or abandoned, and you call municipal staff, fishing wildlife, your local veterinarian, police services, all that stuff gets right to us. We're the only organization that's permitted by the federal government and provincial government to do this work. We train municipal employees in the city of St. Albert who operate underneath our licensing to deal with some of these imperiled creatures. So before going any further, I have a short video I want to show you. It's about two and a half minutes long, and it's going to show you some of the great work we've been doing in the municipality, thanks in part by the funding that you guys provided us over the last year. So I'd like to play that quickly. And then I just have some stats and some things to talk about to kind of wrap things up. So I'll take the opportunity to do this really quickly. Okay, Sean.
You can text port.
Sorry, buddy. Okay. Here we go. Do I have to share again here, Sean, or no?
That looks good.
There we go. Okay. Okay.
Wild North's Wild Rescue Team has worked in cooperation with the city of St. Albert on multiple occasions. Most recently, we cooperated with the city of St. Albert's animal control officers on the rescue of a coyote in rural St. Albert that had a container stuck on its head. Wild North actually trains municipal staff in the safe and humane capture of imperiled wildlife such as this one. We were able to successfully capture the animal, remove the container, and safely release a much happier coyote. We could not have completed this wild rescue so seamlessly without the officer's help. Here, you can see two of our amazing professionally trained wild rescue interns assisting in trapped ducklings at a seniors residence in the city of St. Albert. The mallard has been reported to nest there every year for four years, and each year, Wild North's Wild Rescue Team has responded and liberated the ducklings. The female mallard and all eight of her ducklings were safely extracted from the courtyard with the help of the staff at the seniors home, and we released them at a nearby body of water. This story was actually covered by the St. Albert Gazette. Another wild rescue in St. Albert occurred when an adult beaver was found trapped in a storm drain catch area. In this case, our Wild Rescue Team worked very closely with the fire department to safely extract the beaver from its entrapment. This video shows the joyous day of release after the beaver had received rehabilitative treatment at our wildlife hospital in Edmonton. This large bird pictured here is a great blue heron that a citizen of St. Albert called into our wildlife helpline with concerns of a large mass of debris wrapped around its beak, leaving it unable to eat. Our Wild Rescue Team was able to respond right away, meet the concerned citizen, and with the help of some other members of the public, as you can see here, the heron was carefully captured and the netting was safely removed. The heron then spent a couple nights with us in our care so that it could eat and recover prior to being released. Not long after being rescued, we were able to bring it back to the river in St. Albert where it was found and recent where it belongs, in the wild. For each of these rescues, the city of St. Albert played a large role in many different facets in our ability to assist imperiled wildlife in the area. Thank you.
Okay, so that's just a snapshot of some of the great work that our team does in St. Albert, again with the help of your support. So we're hoping, I know there is no real mechanism for us, or there hasn't been for us, to request sort of ongoing funding from the municipality. So I'm here again today requesting some support for this upcoming year. Here's some quick stats to share with you. So to date, this year, we've admitted more than twenty nine hundred wildlife patients at our wildlife hospital in Edmonton. Of those patients, four point six percent of them have come from the city of St. Albert. That means that we admit a wild creature from St. Albert to our hospital every two point three days. So that's not only helping those animals, but of course assisting the public and, you know, people who have concerns about those animals. We estimate our annual budget in St. Albert to be about thirty five thousand dollars, however, including these services. We also have a wildlife helpline that we receive thirteen thousand five hundred calls each year. Of course, many of those also from the city of St. Albert to help walk people through wildlife human conflicts and the issues that they may be having. So again, just to sum up, we're looking for, I think, in twenty twenty one, we receive ten thousand dollars from the municipality. We're hoping for some kind of like funding for this coming year to continue our efforts and the great relationship we've developed over thirty five years now, so for a very long time.
Thank you so much, Dale. First question from me to you is, can I have a link to that video? I don't know if it's on YouTube or something, because I'd love to share that. It was, I mean, I get wrapped up in videos on Facebook every morning, and it's all about pet rescues and animal rescues, and that was St. Albert. No, that was awesome. I was enraptured. Counselor Jolly had her hand up like within seconds of you taking the stage. Go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you. I'm gonna say that's probably the most enjoyable presentation I've ever heard in five years, sitting here. Um, my question is, so I don't know if you've been following, so I know our intent was to upgrade or update our, one of our grant programs so that you could apply for funding kind of with that mechanism. I'll confirm with our staff if that's going to be up and running starting next year. After you're done, but were you aware of that?
Was I aware that, yeah, I understand that that was sort of a mechanism that we were looking to work. When I explored that, I was told that mechanism wasn't in place, and so they should come in and talk to council again, but.
Perfect, okay, so I'll ask staff, I'll confirm with staff to see if that's next year. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Counselor Hughes has a question.
I'm actually kind of just reflects what Counselor Jolly mentioned. I'm down here, it's okay. Hi, okay, so is there, maybe I need to ask this to staff, are you aware of any other way that you can actually request funding for council other than coming to us at budget? Like, is there any other funding that's available for you that you could apply for, like through the environmental or anything else?
Yeah, so in the, in the past, you had an environmental grant available to us, and when we explored that option, this was how we were directed to come and apply for funding last time as well as this time. So I'm not sure that that grant stream is still available, but in the past, that's who we applied through. And so I believe that that source is no longer available, and this is the mechanism which we're able to follow.
So, sorry, I missed in, so are you, are you under the impression that you can't apply to the environmental grant?
Yeah, yes, I'm under the impression this is the only way that we can apply to receive.
Yeah, he was directed to come to council, really.
All right, and just, Mayor, just so you know, I'm willing to put forward because it's germane, a motion to fund them for ten thousand from the council contingency fund.
I think Counselor Jolly has some plans too. She had some follow-up, but we're going to ask our administration to.
Yeah, I'm willing to put it forward, because I know hers is dependent upon other motions passing, and I'm willing to do it.
Okay, well, let's get to questions of staff first.
Yeah.
And I saw another question, was it you, Counselor Killig? You're used to, okay. So any more questions for Dale?
Seeing none, do we have somebody online from our administration grant related? Anna probably.
I think we've got enough, we should be able to answer whatever questions you've got there.
Counselor Jolly, you had a question for administration?
Yeah, just whether they'll be eligible for outside agencies or environmental advisory, starting in September, I think, is when the change is happening. Ooh, Danielle's nodding, that's good.
The answer, I believe, is yes, but I will defer to Ryan and then Danielle if you want to make any additional comments.
My comment was actually just to note that I believe Wild North did receive grant funding previously, and that's one of the reasons we've directed them to council. I'll turn over to Danielle to talk about future state here.
Thanks, Ryan. Just to provide some more information, so through the chair to Counselor Jolly, we do have, as a, as a new policy comes into effect in September of twenty three, Wild North will be eligible to apply on some of the existing grant funding available, so through, whether that be through outside agencies or events grants, or as it fits needs for their organization, they can apply in alignment with that transition to our new kind of grant framework under new policy.
Perfect, thank you. So I'm seeing nods, you got that.
Okay, so Counselor Jolly, you had, you had emailed some proposals for this earlier?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm okay with just Counselor Hughes's motion. My, my preference would actually be twelve thousand dollars, because costs have gone up since we funded them in twenty twenty one, but I have no issues, yeah.
I emailed it.
Okay, we're all not checking our email accounts, or Hughes, you're gonna have to read it. Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, just give me a second here, because I just hit the send button. So, and I can willing to change it to twelve, that Wild North is funded for twelve thousand dollars, funded from the council contingency budget. And the only question I have is, could this come out of the environmental budget instead for the environmental grants? But if it's not eligible for into our policy, I'll just leave it as is.
I feel like the environmental initiatives grant might be.
It's not eligible, right?
Taken, Mr. Hill, you know?
Through, through your worship and the members of council, previously, our grant programs were restricted to, I guess, organizations that offer, that basically had front door offices in St. Albert. But then under the new grant proposal that we're bringing forward, we'll open that up as long as the services are delivered in St. Albert. So with the new grant review that is happening right now, it'll make it a lot easier for them to be able to access funding through our granting sources.
Okay, so I'm willing to change, take a Counselor Jolly's request as a finally and change it to twelve thousand dollars.
So before I accept that, I don't even know, we're going to debate this.
I just even noticed, that's all.
Sorry, your worship, I just think because it's twelve thousand dollars, we're just discussing the, probably the most appropriate source to put into the motion, yeah.
Just because your other motion has the Women Building Futures one, that's on consent, has it also coming out of council?
No, that's a sponsorship.
Oh, that's a sponsorship, okay, sorry, then we're good, sorry.
So is council contingency, what is, well, when we get to that, where do you want this motion to fall in today's process?
That's fine, you can go under council contingency, and it can just go now.
Okay, just go now, okay, sorry. What is council contingencies amount?
The current budget is fifteen thousand.
So this would take up more than two thirds of our council contingency budget.
You know what, I'm willing to do stabilization, just so we don't eat it up.
Exactly, that's what I was worried about.
We could do stabilization. Would that be better?
You haven't spent any of your council contingency from the twenty two budget, so it can actually just be from the twenty two budget as opposed to next year's.
Okay, so we can save funding from the council, point twenty two council. It wouldn't affect it either way.
Right. So the motion is going to be the Wild North is funded from, for twelve thousand dollars from the two thousand and twenty two council contingency budget. Just be clear there. No, we'll just put it right now, if that's okay. You see, it's twelve thousand dollars, you remember? But we did, we obviously appreciated it last year, and I agree that costs have gone up, and that video just. Perfect, so, yeah. We all ready? Oh, it's there. Do you have anything to add to that?
And the reason why I'm doing this is I appreciate Counselor Jolly's dedication to doing this, but I don't want it to be dependent upon her motion passing to be able to have this discussion and fund this organization today, so I think that these are really vulnerable. The animals have nobody else to count on, and so I just think it's that responsibility to something to help. That's it, thanks.
All right, call for the vote. Vote is closed, passes unanimously. Thank you for what you do. I mean, you, you do a lot. You came spoke to my Rotary Club, they were super impressed, and if you continue to come and serve in St. Albert, please bring the video cameras with you again, because that was great. Yeah, and I will share that, because I think that will help even some of our residents understand.
For sure, we should share that with the, with the cities.
For sure.
Social media and stuff. Yeah, thank you so much, everyone, for your support.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right, let's get into all these motions, ladies and gentlemen. So we have one left on consent, is that what I'm hearing? Three? Okay, who wants to read those into consent? We'll get here, I'm gonna have to get them. Okay, go ahead, Councilman McKay.
That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, municipal operating five point two postponed motion twenty three dash zero one one, which is the operating business case for the Alberta fifty five plus games, twenty twenty seven bid, five point five postponed motion twenty three dash zero one four Women Building Futures program funding, and five point one six postponed motion twenty three zero three zero. Grass cutting standard, thank you.
All right, anything to add to that, Counselor McKay?
No, I think they're on consent for region, so.
Okay, call for the vote. Vote is closed, passes unanimously. Okay, uh, let's have some fun as we do this. Why don't we start with tax meter? See where we're at. We just added. Now, we just added Women Building Futures, grass cutting, and, yeah, the other one. And Alberta Games, that was the other one. Okay, do you want to give us a quick explanation for those at home?
The current proposed tax rate increase is sitting at four point six percent.
So that's, that's. Okay, right, okay, that's.
Latest motions didn't make any change.
So the blue one is what, what?
Where we started.
Fletcher and brought in, and the green is how we are compared to that, okay.
Correct, so I believe the blue will stay static and the green will shift depending on ultimately the decisions of council through the, through the debate and discussion.
Does it turn red as it goes higher?
Yeah, you could have a little red bar, or, okay, we're good. All right, let's get to this. Okay, so we're starting with municipal capital. Shockingly, council, we had no utility motions this year. First time in a long time, no utility motions. We're starting with the capital budget. Uh, four point one was a motion given by Counselor Hughes, which was postponed motion twenty for a business process consultant. Counselor Jolly brought it off consent. I'll go to her just to see if she brought it off for voting purposes or for question purposes.
I'm just going to oppose it.
Okay, so I will go to Counselor Hughes to read it.
Sure, and then I have questions to staff, but a business process consultant to assist in identifying and in the implementation of improved processes for the planning engineering department, and the amount of up to hundred fifty thousand be funded, and the funding sources of capital reserve pay as you go.
Excellent, all right, you said, before I accept that, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm not going to change the motion, but do I have any engineering people? Can we bring them on? Awesome. Hi, Donnie, hi, Don. So the intention of this motion, I know that I gave you guys a heads up that I was planning to bring this forward, and the intention of this motion is to help you guys implement efficiencies and implement the ENY report efficiencies and the others that are identified. So do you think this would help you? Like, when I'm, this is, this is intended to provide assistance and give you guys some relief. Do you see value in what I'm bringing forward?
Through the chair to Counselor Hughes. This is not just engineering, this is planning and engineer, so I let Adrian speak to it as well. So, yeah, it's a double edged sword when I say that. Yes, always welcome the additional funding to improve processes, but it comes with capacity constraints that we already are experiencing within the staff. So, yeah, even if we hire a consultant, we absolutely need to provide some parallel assistance from staff managing them and whatnot. So with all the council priorities that's upcoming for twenty twenty three, the only challenge that we see is internal staff resourcing. But always, any additional funding would help in moving our processes forward.
How many of the ENY, and this is to you, Ann, Adrian, how many of the ENY recommendations have you been able to implement to date?
So there are two, through the chair to Counselor Hughes, within engineering, there are two initiatives that is on, one on capital and one on asset management. That's currently identified to be moved forward in twenty twenty three as part of our corporate business plan.
But so far, you haven't been able to do it, right? Basically, because of float issues?
That's right.
From what I understand, it's, you know, the intention is to do it, but then every time you think there's a low, a new tsunami comes in for, for workload, and you just can't handle it, because you can't direct the boat when you're busy drowning. So I guess that's how I'm interpreting your situation, is that you just don't have the resources right now to be able to dedicate it, and every time you think you do, it changes to where you don't again. Would that be correct?
Through the chair to Counselor Hughes, maybe I need to refer that to the corporate stretch, strategy group, because they are helping us to internally prioritize and then move the pieces forward. But having said that, there will be dedicated resources from engineering and or planning for that matter to move the pieces forward in twenty twenty three for those two projects. So I'm not exactly sure if the hundred and fifty additional would help, but that's something that we need to review once the funding is approved or unfunded.
Perhaps. Perhaps, your worship, just before Adrian speaks, I could comment on that last question. I think that broadly, there is a correct characterization, as was noted. The intent is always there, it's certainly planned, capacity is an issue, as well as capacity sometimes is actually a dollar figure, so to say, with that capacity to ensure that things are properly implemented, if there are practical manifestations in terms of software, hardware processes, those types of things.
Perfect. I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add, Adrian, about, I didn't get a chance to talk to you and explain this, so I guess I'm hoping in debate I'll be able to explain it, but the intention is to help you guys in any way, if there are efficiencies, to help you guys identify and implement them. Is there any, I guess I'm just, I'm looking for any comment that you may have before we go into debate about whether, how you see this and how it may or may not help you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Hughes. So much, much to what Donnie said, we do get caught in this ironic trap where we, we get so busy with the other stuff that we have trouble actually implementing. Uh, from the planning and development side, we identified two things through Ernst and Young. One was, uh, digitize, digitization of our, um, application processes, which, um, we actually did put forward a business case for that for $400,000, but there's, um, some other reasons why that one isn't being recommended to proceed right now. And then the other part was to review our fees. And, um, I don't, I don't know that a fee study would cost that much. It would, it would cost a chunk, but not, not obviously 150,000. Uh, again, much to what Donnie said, um, the resources are all, always appreciated. It's a matter of trying to figure out how we can actually utilize those in a way that's, um, you know, being efficient and, uh, responsible of the taxpayer dollars. So, sure.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Council McKay.
I guess I'm, I'm not sure whether maybe part of this question will go to Council Hughes, maybe some of it will go to administrations. Just based on the, what I think I, or what I believe I heard. Well, so the intent of the proposed motion is to hire a consultant, but then what I believe I heard was is that um, it would require resources, internal resources to work beside this consultant, but when reality was where the money is, is for implementation of other projects that just didn't meet the prioritization matrix. Is that correct? From administration?
Um, perhaps I could start, counselor, from administration's perspective, I think the, the question becomes the, the intent behind 150. If it's to identify further opportunities for efficiencies, um, which I think is part and parcel of it, that the concern is implementing those efficiencies if, if they cost staff effort and money, because we're already a little bit behind the eight ball I would offer through no one's fault. If, um, it's the identification and the assistance with the implementation, um, in terms of that capacity, then, you know, I, I think that is something that we would look at, but I, I don't know, you know, practically how that would manifest itself.
So I believe I heard in the question I originally was going to pose was the one that Counsel Hughes did in relation to Ernst and Young's report and the recommendations arising out of there. And some of them are midterm, long-term, I would imagine that impact both planning and, and, uh, uh, engineering, but so. So would, so if the Ernst and Young report has got the recommendations, then the problem is that implementing them is just lack of resources. Does a consultant help administration do that? Or was it, is the actual deficit, the actual money mean needed to actually identify the recommendations that may be different projects, maybe different factors?
Uh, yeah, the, the answer is, is a little bit of both, um, unfortunately. So I, certainly a consultant could help, um, identify an action plan to implementation. Ideally, we'd have capacity to assist with the implementation. That's really where the concern is. Um, but the flip side is that there will be staff, um, horsepower, uh, for lack of a better term, uh, required as well.
Okay, I, I mean, I think that's, I was trying to delve in a little bit deeper. Is that your, is that your intent, council? You may say it in opening.
I think, I think you're gonna hear me talk too long in debate. So if you just sit tight for 10 more seconds.
I see. I see no more questions, so I'm gonna accept your motion. Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. Um, and I just want to say that mayor, before I begin, that you allow the agenda of the budget to be done not in such a rushed fashion, and I appreciate that. So just letting you know, that's, uh, before we had it, it was five minutes, five minutes, and it's difficult sometimes. Okay, so back to the, back to the motion. This motion is about an investment in our staff. What we have is a challenge that these guys are overwhelmed. We're constantly seeing requests for new staffing and they are unable to implement any of the recommendations. And I realize some of it may be cost because some of it came from ENY. The intention is to see what can be implemented from ENY, to talk to staff, figure out the processes are and see if there's any other low hanging fruit that can be done as well to help improve the processes. What I've come to learn from this business process consultants in general, what they do is they go in and they see what could be done that's more efficient that you're just not noticing. And then they come forward with a recommendation plan and they also come forward with an implementation and they hold your hand from beginning to end. So that what we had before is just simply, uh, recommendations, they come forward, report, they go away and they leave it to us or to the administration to figure out how they're going to manage that. A business process consultant is different. They actually help you figure out how there's discussions, it's collaborative to figure out what can be done and when and how it can be done with as little disruption as possible to the organization. Most of the time, business process consultants, when they work in private, um, industry, they're coming forward and they can change a budget where people are going from $3 million of deficit to $14 million of profit in under a couple of years just by changing the processes. And they have to do this while the business is fully operational and without disruption to their client base. So that is what I'm hoping we can achieve. We're planning engineering because I don't see an opportunity for them to do this deep dive, to do a self-evaluation. Um, and to say, here's how we can change our process to make it better because they're just so busy being swamped, doing it the way they currently are. And so they also, for most staff, don't have even the authority to come back and say, I'd like to change this and this and this. You just do it the way it's done. That's how we actually see is working. So this, the intention behind this is to actually empower this department to be able to make their job easier, to make it definitely, hopefully more efficient and less stressful. Because by having somebody come in and say, hey, maybe there's just a few things that we can do here to implement it. It's going to be working with staff, not against them. And then saying, how can we make it so that your job works better? And that's going to help for staff, it's going to help the people they're serving. It's going to help account administration just in general, and it's going to help council. Because I don't want to see other types of things come forward where we have $18 million in St. Albert Trail and then four years later come forward and say the revised budget is actually 52 million. And really the problem from that came from processes. So if we change our processes and we change the order of how things are done and we give a much better layout for staff, we empower them to when they come forward to council, they can be more confident about what they're bringing forward because they know that this is the best way that can do it the most efficient and the most solid way they can bring it forward. And they're also empowered to know that those decisions are backed up by somebody else who's looked at other municipalities, other organizations that can say it would work. So that is what the intention of this is. When I talk to people who were business consultants, I think they could do it for 120. So I said, okay, let's give some wiggle room and do 150. If it comes to an RFP and it comes in too high, we'll have a discussion and reevaluate whether or not it's worth it. But I honestly think that every time that we've done something that has had an ability to look at efficiencies and we've implemented it, the organization's going to come out the other end a lot stronger. Obviously, when you do this, you're going to have to talk to staff, you're going to work with staff and it's going to take some resources of staff, but it's going to take a lot less resources of staff. And if you leave them to their own and then try to figure out how they're going to manage it with their work plan without somebody there who's actually knows how to do it, that is their job. Identify it, work through a work plan and implement it for them and with them. Instead of saying, figure out how you're going to do it on the butt side of your desk and it may or may not be done. So that is the intention behind this. And I, this is really about investing in, in our organization, not about spending $150,000. It's about investment and I'm confident that when it comes out and they're finished, that we will get this pack in spades in tenfold. And if nothing else, we will see it in the fact that the employees will be able to do more, do it more confidently and with less stress, and that alone will help us. Because I'm not looking to every, and we talked about these high tax increases and I'll conclude with this, but we talk about the high tax increases and everybody says either raise the taxes or lower the service levels or cut staff. And I don't think that any of those the right solution. I think what we need to do is talk about our processes and see if we can maximize the use of our best resources, which are our staff, and see if we can empower them so that they can do their job more efficiently and stop talking about cutting service levels and cutting staff. But let's see what we can do so we don't need more staff, but they can do their job better. And that's what this motion is about. That's it. Thank you.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. Um, so I think the, the intent of this motion is fantastic. Um, but we're, we're already drowning in recommendations without the resources to implement. So you know, as there are no known benefits to this one-time contract, um, and both because the kind of procurement supportive this role would be significant, um, resulting in delays to permitting and because existing resources would likely be a better fit for achieving, uh, the same outcome. I'm, uh, opposing the investment at this time. Thank you.
Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I'd just like to take a moment to build on Counselor Hughes's comments and we look in the overall briefing uh, document that we have for this particular item. The, the, the word implementation is, uh, predominant in four or five places in, in the write-up. So this is not about doing more process review as maybe a outside consultant would do and just deliver a report and kind of walk away and leave it at, you know, plunk it on your desk and say, okay, leave it up to you to implement. Th- this is about bringing someone in who can work side by side between the two departments, planning and engineering. Um, look for opportunities. And the key focus is, as I said, if you do kind of a word count in the, in the briefing document, implementation uh, comes up front and center. And, uh, yes, I, a- a- anytime you implement process, you have to work with staff. Um, and, uh, you know, it may take, uh, meetings with them or, or whatever, but the end result, you may have to invest 20 hours upfront, but the end result is you save 200 hours because you come out with a better product and, and a better way to, to, to work. Um, so I, I think if we look at the real intent of this, it, it is to help with implementation, not just do another study and kind of walk away. And, uh, uh, for, for that reason, I think it's a good investment that in, in our planning and engineering departments because it's, that's where we spend the bulk of our, our, uh, capital dollars and, uh, we've already got a lot of recommendations from the Ernst and Y report that we haven't been able to fully implement. Um, this might just give us the, the, the $150 kind of Kickstarter fund to, uh, to get this one going. So I, I, I'm going to support this motion.
Council McKay.
Uh, thanks for the comments so far. Uh, I'm, I'm, my mind is not made up and I'm going to be, uh, open to closing arguments, but here's my comments or my, my thinking behind my comments anyways. Um, I, I believe that, you know, based on some of the previous comments, um, I, you know, this doesn't even come to us as a project charter from administration, doesn't come to us in any unfunded form that had been previously identified, but just didn't rise to the bar of the prioritization matrix process that, uh, senior leadership team has. Um, and so I think, um, we are maybe reading between the lines a little bit in relation to some of the, uh, the, uh, challenges. Uh, certainly I would hope that administration would have brought those things to council if they were, uh, uh, having challenges with those obstacles. Um, and so, um, looking at that, I think there would have been a little bit more strength if it would have even have come as an unfunded project charter, uh, and then I could actually say, you know, we're having, we're having challenges right now. It's, it's sort of like just a feel or, uh, uh, or something that, uh, council's seeing, whether you, whether you counted the number of times we used the word implementation. I believe that some of the Ernst and Young, um, recommendations are still sitting there because they were identified as medium and long-term and required additional uh, staff time and, and, and I guess finally, my final comment is my worry about even, even if you say you're bringing in a process consultant who's going to identify just on process. Uh, not, but in reality, I just worry that we're just layering another consultant's report on top of a previous consultant's report. And all we are is complicating, uh, a situation that really hasn't been identified as a problem by administration.
Council Vermentsky.
Okay. Thank you through the mayor. At, at this point in time, um, I'm liking the, um, argument that Counselor Hughes has, that it's a business process consultant. And as many of you would know, I'm, I'm not generally in favor of consultants. And, um, so I don't again want to be wasting money on a consultant report, but when I hear that it can be, you know, this person can be working right with the staff and perhaps taking a load off their shoulders, I'm willing to support it, but I'll wait for finer, final argument again. Thank you.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, well, uh, the stated, um, intent of the motion, I, I certainly agree with the, uh, I'm a proponent of finding new ways of doing, uh, what we try to do in a more effective and efficient way. And I think through exercises like that, even, even the idea of examining such, uh, pays dividends to the organization. I suspect it didn't rise to the funded category because, uh, you know, it's hard to put forward, uh, another consultant report I, in an environment of, of high tax, but, uh, and I say, uh, I, I want to regulate that word a little bit because we're likely here to firm out over the next couple of days. The, the tax request today is a result of society and, and the issues that uh, we're facing high inflation, uh, significant cost increases and, and a number of things that are contributing to the cost of delivering service. So it is what it is, uh, as sad as that is. But in this particular case, I, I, you know, if we can find a way of doing business better, then we should do that. And, uh, and if this motion gets us there, uh, I suspect that this will indeed be money well spent.
I'll be quick. I wanted to try to get these things done in like 10 minutes and we've been like 20 on the first motion. So we got to be concise, guys, but, um, Council Hughes, I totally get what you're trying to do. We talked about it at audit. But, um, adding $150,000 to a budget when we are already looking at 4.6, most likely close to 6% this year is not, um, something I'm comfortable with, especially because it was not requested from our staff. We have the UI report that we still have to implement and maybe the following year is the best time for the business process consultant, but, uh, trust in the staff that they would request it if this was going to save us money, uh, and they have not. So I can't support it tonight. Go ahead, Nicholas.
Thank you. Um, okay, so let's just cover all the things really quickly here. This is not going to cause a tax increases coming out of the capital budget. It's not going to affect it one iota at the end of it, but it has potential to actually save both this council and future councils. A lot of grief when it comes to tax increases forward because there's a possibility here, and I think a real likelihood that we are going to find some low hanging fruit efficiencies that are going to make it easier for the staff to do their job. It has the potential here for the turnaround time to actually be improved better than what it already is, which will help our reputation with developers. And from that, if we also can do more efficiencies, we're charging high fees for these services. And if we actually can deliver them for less, we have a better chance for cooping more money from this. This isn't just a delivery, it's also a cost recovery. So there's nothing here that could actually be a downside. The only thing we have is that we are expecting staff who've already indicated that for the past several years, they have no breaks and there's their ability to actually enact anything that's coming forward. And they certainly do not have the time to look for any other further low hanging fruit to try to save any type of their efficiencies and move it to their own devices to find this. What I'm trying to do here is not just about address this year's tax increase, but every year's tax increase going forward, we have the same problem coming to us in 12 months. And if we can do something to help alleviate the problems because we plan today to decrease the money for tomorrow, it's going to make a huge difference and $150,000 is an investment. And I believe in investing in our staff, especially these two very prominent departments that have such an interaction with both their public and the developer community. So that's it. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Running closes and that passes by majority with, uh, Mayor Heron. Sorry. The Council Jolly and Council McKay opposed. Uh, point two was business case, um, sorry, motion put forward by Council Vermentsky. It's motion postponed motion 38. Uh, Council Jolly, I won't go to you every time because, um, I think in your email, because you, you pulled off the first chunk that I think many people were going to probably do as well. Um, unless if you have a question, just put up your hand. I won't ask you if it was for voting purposes. So I'll just go to the mover of the motion, Council Vermentsky, to, to read it into the record. Uh, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you through the mayor. That the capital projects resource coordinator operating business case be unfunded and savings are applied to reduce the 2023 tax base.
Awesome. Before I accept that, is there any questions? Seeing that, I accept your motion, Council Vermentsky. Go into your opening comments.
Thank you through the mayor again to administration. Um, with respect to administration, there's one key factor that stands out in the backgrounder. We're all trying to find, we are all trying to find answers at this time. This factor that stands out in the backgrounder is that there's no anticipated impacts to service levels without creating this new full-time position. The position currently exists as a temporary classification. However, it's been staffed up to full-time for several years, again, several years. Suddenly creating a permanent full-time position in a budget year with the largest projected tax increase in memory does not seem prudent or correct timing to the justification of simply strengthening the attractiveness of the role. We are currently in a financial climate where businesses are reducing staffing now. We are currently in a financial climate where businesses are reducing staffing hours and not hiring. Costs are climbing and many are financially stressed. Government like no other time needs to follow suit and operate lean by prioritizing permanent and costly staffing decisions. A year with the projected massive tax increases is not the time to make decisions that further affect future taxpayers without confirmation of necessity. And again, the backgrounder uh does not justify nece- necessity and says that it can be delayed. So I'm asking to delay. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Hughes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna support this motion. Um, because I just not sure, but I don't see the necessity. It's clear it's been filled for several years. Uh, it, we're going into a recession. I don't see where we are actually gonna have um a loss. The services are gonna continue to be provided. They just simply will not be provided through an FTE permanent. And the challenge we have every time we add an FTE permanent is it's not just this here, it's not fifteen hundred dollars, it's fifteen hundred dollars plus the step and cola for every year going forward. So it's not a fifteen hundred dollar decision. This is a fifteen hundred dollar and a ten thousand dollar for next year and a twelve thousand dollar the year after that type of a decision. When we move it forward from a, from a term to an FTE. So I'm gonna support this just because I just, I think that we can keep it the status quo. And we can discuss having a, a different type of rationale if we need to actually change this position to a different uh, different level. That's it. Thank you.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. So I'm opposing this because the, the costs, you know, not only financial but cultural and reputational um relating to turnover far, far exceed this small investment. So um, that's it.
I, I see no one else. Oh, Council Kilic.
Yeah, I, I, you know, this goes almost to the previous uh point where we need to have someone help our, our staff. This is a recommendation from administration. Uh, we're currently paying someone part, part-time position or uh, uh, non-full-time position. We just wanna move them into a, a full-time position. They manage some of our biggest um, funding base on capital projects. And to have the stability of this person in place, uh, and, and working as part of the team and, and reducing the chance of turnover, you lose as a staff member, you, you lose three months of continuity and understanding and you have to retrain them and y- your, your whole corporate history on those capital projects is lost. Uh, so I, I will, uh, I believe making this person full-time and re- retaining them is actually the way to go. Um, so I, I won't be uh supporting, uh, pulling the funding for, for this position.
Thank you. Council Vermentsky to close.
Thank you through the mayor. Um, I think the only argument for this is reducing turnover and in all reality, the persons uh, that's being used in the position has been there several years. So um, my thought is if, if, if it was a need, it would have been brought forward to council several years ago, not in the year that the tax increase is the greatest. So again, if it's been several years, I think it can um, you know, continue a little bit longer till we're out of this debt hole that we're in. So thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's close. Uh, that motion fails with Council Vermentsky and Council Hughes in favor. All right, we are now on to postpone motion twenty-three, which is engineering positions by Council Hughes.
So it's at the full funding of the following three engineering? Oh, actually, um, before I bring it forward, the alternate motion that's brought forward, the, at the bottom of the backgrounder. Um, I'm willing to put that forward, but I just have one quick question here. So when we talked about the, the my motion was what, the three FTEs? Now we're talking about, there's another one and a half FTEs. And so, and it says a mention of the same principle. So what you're saying is that uh, that we actually have four and a half FTEs that are being funded through the capital reserve right now. Is that what's happening? Okay, and we're just suggesting we transfer everything over so transparency. Okay. So I'm willing to bring forward the alternative motion at the end of the backgrounder, just so we're nice, so you're on top of it. Uh, to reflect stronger transparency of resources required engineering, the full funding, yeah, for the following three engineering positions. The capital projects resource coordinator, project resource administrator, transportation data coordinator is budgeted within the municipal operating budget with an equal offsetting budgeted transfer. And it says to capital, but it should be from capital, right? It is going from capital to operating. I'm just looking if I'm wrong. I'm gonna say from capital until you guys tell me otherwise. And that the existing one point five FTE permanent positions be managed under the same principle.
Go ahead, uh, through the chair of Council Hughes. No, we actually are saying to capital. So what, what we're, the, the issue that we're facing is that if we don't actually move the charges for those positions into those capital projects, we lose opportunity to apply grant funding against them. Um, so we would have them budgeted, they're more visible in the operating budget, but then we would be transferring their costs to those capital projects so that we can utilize, fully utilize our grant funding um, towards them. So, so it'll be a net zero impact to the taxes. Um, but it's a more transparent way of, like you said, just kind of like showing what the true impact um, of those engineering positions is. So it's, it's a little different from what you originally put forward, but when we started looking at the impact um, of how we can utilize our grant funding, we'd end up having to use more of our pay-as-you-go funding and we're already kind of short in that area. Um, so we didn't wanna lose the ability to, because those positions are eligible for that grant funding.
So from what I'm hearing, just so you know, Dan, really hard to hear everybody at home. So just get really close to it like I do so that it resonates through the mountains like it does for me. Um, okay, so what I'm hearing then is that we're gonna track, we're gonna put them in operating, we're gonna transfer that money over to capital from the operating. So that way uh, we can still apply for grants. And if we didn't, we'd have an issue. It actually costs us more money, but this way we can actually reflect them properly on our books.
That's correct. So they'll, they'll show in our operating um originally and then they'll be transferred over, but the cost will be transferred over to those capital projects.
Okay, so the funding is coming still from
The funding is still ultimately coming from capital.
So does that mean we're increasing the pay as you go overall pot? No, no, it's just a straight across. Okay.
Okay, that's it. And we'll, I have me to start? There's no questions? Okay, so this is about, just about making the accounting transparent. I just felt uncomfortable about having, saying we're having FTEs funded through capital exclusively through capital, because it's supposed to be for one-time projects and now we're putting an ongoing employee in that position. So this is not about stopping them from transferring over to an FTE position, but simply showing that they are actually are part of the operating. And now as we're saying, we're moving them over to uh maximize our grant cap capability. I just felt very uncomfortable about funding FTEs from a capital, which is supposed to be one-time funding, when we have an ongoing um, cost. That's it.
Council McKay.
Yeah, I'll be really quick. I just wanna congratulate Council Hughes for identifying this was uh, this is good because now you're gonna be able to actually see those positions. They're fully visible. And uh, I mean, one of the concerns that was identified in the backgrounder was as if we did them with, uh, this way, we, we wouldn't be eligible for grants. And so um, I think this is a, a really good way of kind of aligning everything and uh, so I, I'm fully supportive.
I see no one else wanting to make any comments, Council Hughes. Assume there's nothing else. Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. We are now on to postpone motion twenty-seven. Uh, youth transitional housing study, Council Vermentsky. Get you to read it in.
Thank you so much. Um, uh, the C, uh, CSD zero zero one youth transitional housing study is postponed for consideration in the twenty twenty-four budget and the funds of a hundred and thirty-two thousand is returned to the capital budget.
All right, before I accept that, is there any questions? Council McKay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I guess it just goes into one of my, one of my earlier questions. I even asked for the backgrounder, but I still was a little unclear. So uh, we did have a position that was tied to social housing. That position has been repurposed um, in relation to organizational need. But is it, is it beyond our own internal capacity to be able to conduct some of the um, uh, objectives? This housing study is so to do. Yeah, I know it was in the VIR, but I'm trying to in, identify it. I'm like, I'm trying to identify a little clarity there.
Yeah, go ahead. That's a good question. Yep.
Yep, I think I will ask Elizabeth Wilkie if she's online to address that.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'll actually redirect this over to Connie, because Connie's dug into this even deeper in the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon through the mayor to Council McKay. Uh, thanks for that question. Uh, the position that we uh hired, the social housing position, part of the work of that position is definitely to do some of those local gap analysis in the housing industry, but the position that was hired into was never um, the credentials looked for was never a position that would do that higher level consultant kind of work. Because we're looking at something fairly grandiose with a transitional housing model and looking for partners throughout the province that would be, even be interested in running something like that. So that certainly wasn't the, the full credential of the position that we have in place uh to do some of the more ongoing work in a permanent basis. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, yes, it does. I, I mean, I was asking around whether or not the, whether the position could actually handle the complexities or, or the minutia that's, that you believe is required um, to make, to make the transitional um, home successful. So this isn't sunk costs necessarily, but it's a contributing costs is the anticipation because you're trying to say potentially they will, just like we were trying to do around process improvement, you're actually looking at potentially identifying uh, uh, potential partners, grants, other alternative service delivery that could make this actually viable.
That, that's correct. So at no point is the intent that the city would run, because it's not our business to run the transitional house. And so the intent of getting the consultant that's um, got the, the specialty in this area is to identify those bigger partners that on a long-term, permanent basis would run transitional home. The position really is a non-turn, ongoing kind of a community development position, always looking at those housing needs from a social perspective. And so that's ongoing work we would need in many years to come.
Thank you.
Well, um, before I go to you, Council Kilic, just give me two seconds. I need to make this bigger because my eyes are horrible. Two thousand and twenty, we were doing the two thousand and twenty-one budget and there was a business case for social housing coordinator. I'm gonna read you the X, the definition. Consideration of association housing specialists whose role will be to advance social housing supports for all vulnerable citizens in Albert and the youth supportive housing capital project as a recommendation by the, it's, it's the same position and that's my opinion. And uh, Council McKay, I think you've, you've, we've got a, we've got a problem here, Mr. Fletcher. We've already, we've already proved this position. In my mind, that's what I voted for in two thousand and twenty for the twenty-one budget, with somebody to advance this project. So I don't know what, what we should do, if we should maybe just put this on hold and have a conversation about what happened, because the role was obviously after approved was changed. Or, or we misunderstood, but it's pretty clear that was actually right out of our budget document, was to advance this new home. So um, I, I don't wanna kill this position, so I want the youth home to go. So any thoughts? Sorry, putting you on a spot here. You weren't here, obviously. Yeah.
I know you were, so I, I think there's absolutely a conversation to be had. Um, so a- as was noted, I think the, the, the first part of that job description is actually happening currently. The second part I, I would offer to you right now is on.
Okay.
And, and if you wanna put on a hold and have a discussion.
We might wanna do this in camera, council, um, because it's a position and labor, land legal labor and we can do it later. If we, can we? Table? Table for today. Uh, and I think honestly, those of us who sat and voted for it need to know what the, I, my intention was to advance the youth home. And now I'm doing it again, two years later. So um, sorry Connie, don't need to put you on the spot at all. You know how passionate we are about this project and all housing. So I think we just really need to figure out what happened um, in our misunderstanding. So could we just table this till later? Okay. Sorry, um, sorry, Council Vermentsky, is that okay?
The only part that I'm confused on is this is just a study, not a position. So I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, isn't it kind of to hire somebody to do?
It's just a consultant study.
Yeah, yeah, but we, so in my position, we've already hired somebody in the city with that job description.
Okay.
To do it. Okay.
Um, so just, I'm not sure, Mayor, if she, um, if Miss Council Vermentsky's using the tabling, because I think this is the first time we've done it in budget with her president. Tabling just means that we're gonna discuss it, but at a later time, this meeting, either this meeting or on Thursday, uh, when we have a bit more information. So tabling just means we're just pushing it off, but you will be able to debate it later on. Okay?
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, postpone motion twenty-eight. Uh, number one to yours, Council Vermentsky. It's the Millennium Park Design Phase Two. So I'll get you to read it in.
Trying to save people money. Uh, that the DARP zero zero five Millennium Park Design Phase Two in construction be postponed to the twenty twenty-five budget and the tax savings of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand is returned to the capital budget.
All right, before I accept the motion, is there any questions? Council Hughes has one.
Yes, thank you. So to staff, um, when we had, I, I need someone up there that I recognize. Because I only see Council Jolly and I don't think she wants to answer these questions. There we go. Okay, Danielle. So my understanding when we had, when we had question period on this is that this section of doing the planning would not make a shovel ready for a grants, correct?
Correct. Through the Chair to Council Hughes, this is really to get the first stage of planning um, in place. If you need some more detail, I do have Manda Wild on the call. But it's really to get the utilities, the planning for the utilities and the planning for the base work on the site in place, not the building yet. So this doesn't get us ready for grants. We'd need to um, probably take the design further along in order to be prepared to apply for grants, I would suggest.
So one of the concerns I also have is that this would be moving it forward, I understand with landscaping, but it also would de facto approve kind of what, because you'd be putting in servicing with this into plan as well. The layout that was brought forward to us a couple of months ago, would that be correct?
Maybe I can have uh, Manda Wild jump in and offer some more um, content to the uh, the design of the first stage.
Yeah, thank you, Danielle, and to the Chair to Council Hughes. Uh, this phase is intended to at least establish the general wear of any future building. So we have options to bring servicing, you know, fairly to the property line within the property um, or not at all. Or sorry, to the property line or within the property. Uh, it would be our intention to do a bit of a preliminary design um, to at least understand um, with the public. Um, is the concept plan that was developed still valid? Is it still roughly what people are looking for? Um, and then the small extensions to servicing are, are significantly less expensive than the first stage of bringing them to the site. Um, so we could have some, we could build some flexibility into this design without kind of nailing us, nailing us down on the exact building location and size and tie-in locations for the servicing, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Kilic.
Uh, just to try and get my head wrapped around uh, this, we, we were told earlier when we did the review of, of the design, um, and I think we were asked a question, or a question was asked of administration um, that this funding would be for the high-level design as it was previously presented. Um, so it, this, this first step still locks us in to pretty much servicing based on that, that high-level design that was presented. Um, the documents, all the, you know, charts and rough placement of the building, it is and size of the building, et cetera, and the humanities. I- i- is that correct? That's what we're, that's, we're taking the first step to that plan.
I'll go to Danielle and perhaps Seth, you heard uh, to Manda, depending on how she wants to answer.
Yeah, Manda, I'd invite you to offer um, some thoughts on that.
Certainly, and to the Chair to Council Kilic. Uh, this is certainly how we would start the process for sure. So as part of the public engagement, we would look at, you know, rough footprints of the building, approximately where on the site, those type of considerations. So would set the stage and, and the idea behind this is to bring the um, get it ready um, to be built on at some point in the future, uh, to give a little bit more functionality to it in the short term. Right now it's quite underutilized. Um, bring some, you know, trails and picnic tables and improve landscaping, that kind of thing in the short term. Um, so it will set us forward on a path for, for sure. Um, but would it, we would still be able to build in quite a bit of flexibility um, if direction were to change in the future, um, because the basic servicings, um, you know, storm, water, power, all of those things um, were likely to be required in any type of urban plaza type uh amenity. Um, and sizing uh, for park projects in particular, and I would invite uh, Donnie to jump in if she'd like to as well. Uh, from my understanding, don't change significantly. Um, and we can plan to, you know, oversize or undersize, or sorry, oversize. And you know, there's not a lot of consequences if the building were to be scaled back or the amenities scaled back in the future.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Just a question on process. So the uh. This particular project was brought to senior leadership team for review and. Within the context of the entire budget. And yet you recommended this to be funded, I suspect based on council's stated rec uh desire to move. Millennium Park along. Uh. In your mind, this met the, the standard required for this particular year, correct?
That, that is correct. It's explicitly stated as a council priority that factored into. It wasn't exclusive, but certainly factored into our decision to bring it forward.
Then uh, just a question on uh, on the, the result of this particular motion. It says tax savings of three thirty-seven back to the capital budget. There's really no tax implication here, is there? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I see no more questions. So Council Bermansky, I will accept your motion and I'll let you start your opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so um my stand on this one. Three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for a detailed design of a design that was already presented to council with. Without council really getting a buy-in feeling or public support, uh seems somewhat premature. There could be no value in creating a detailed design of a project that is not supported. So that's my concern that um, you know, money might be. Spent on a design that, a design hasn't even, you know, fully bought in yet. Um, funding plans for possible nice-to-haves is premature, as long as funding without large tax increases does not increase, not exist. Within strategic priority of downtown, downtown vibrancy is not confirmed that council was sold on the gain in downtown vibrancy. By this design, or at least some of us weren't. Um, and it's, I think that we need. At this point, further feedback and, you know, further design discussion rather than getting into a detailed design. Of a design that wasn't perhaps the right design. So I, I could see it as a waste of money, just. Going forward and then changing everything in the end, so.
Council Hughes.
Thank you. So I'm going to agree with this one as well with Council Bermansky. The challenge we had is we came forward for a workshop. We was given a sheet of paper with um colors and shapes and what it looks like. Um. I wasn't thrilled with the design myself. Uh, we were told that, you know, we would move forward with design back then, that it would uh help us be more grant-ready. We've since learned that that's not going to be the case if we simply approve this. There's a real risk that we are going to do this, go forward with it. And then when the actual decision to move forward and do anything larger with it. Um, comes forth that it will change and that it just simply will be sunk costs. So I really think that if you're going to be ready to do Millennium Park, do Millennium Park, do the whole one point eight million and move forward with it and have it grant-ready and have it ready to go. But doing it in this staged approach makes it more likely that we are just simply going to put money into both this and potentially servicing. And then ultimately change the direction of where we're going. I'm not quite satisfied with what came forward and I think I mentioned it at the time. So. I would love to see as we, as Council Bermansky says, like a more discussion about the design. It hasn't been brought forward to the public. It was just a workshop. And have council say, yes, I'm comfortable with this layout. And then discuss going forward with that, but we're actually jumping the gun here because we haven't actually approved even an overall design by council. We just had a workshop. Which is not supposed to be approved by council. So I would uh like to just delay this for a year. I think that's, that's what the emotion is, is to delay it for a year. Have a further discussion and be confident that what we're doing, we're ready to do and go with both feet forward and not just put our big toe in. And potentially have to pay a lot of money. This is going to be some costs. So that's it. Thanks.
Council Kilik.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the whole idea, concept of Millennium Park. We went to a great uh. Uh, UDI luncheon a while back and talked about the power of a park. Uh, the challenge for me is. I, I just don't see the current design meeting those, those requirements and supporting. How we grow to a hundred thousand people. Um, and I, I am very concerned with the current plan. Locks us into that plan. Uh, sunk costs maybe um is one way to look at it for sure. But, but more that locks us into a plan that I, and I appreciate administration, all the work and. And hours and public consultation and input that's been gathered. I, I just am not comfortable with the current design. Uh, I think we should defer the funding and. Have, have a, a- another look at this and make sure we're going in the right direction rather than uh funding it as, as currently requested. So. Uh, I'll, I'll be supporting Counselor uh Bermansky on this.
Council Mackay.
I can see the arguments uh put forward by my previous counselors. However, I'm. I'm going to take uh an imposing view in relation to this because I mean, I, I agree that potentially what we saw. Um, maybe concerns some as being that's what we were going to get. But uh, no, I don't think it is. If you read the, if you read the project charter, it isn't, but. Um, I mean, it, I mean, we've already had extensive public engagement uh for the site and. All this stage does, um, and we heard it through administration is moves the project. From the concept, which is basically what we saw on um. Piece of paper handed to us when we did the walkthrough. But I mean, it's no different than me saying. Um, you know what? I, I, I would like my sink in that corner of the house and I would. Like my stove in that corner of my kitchen and, and, and I got a CAD diagram of a. Of another kitchen that I would like. I mean, it's concept. And what we're trying to do here is to move this thing forward. So that we can start to look at detailed design and then that detailed design will start, will come back to us for final approval. And whether all this is doing is project management, moving it through the stage of a, of a project as intended. So. I uh, I don't see this as being anything different. I believe that there'll be opportunities for uh more uh input. By not only council, but by uh citizens. And um, I, I'm just. Willing to let this go forward as put forward in the project uh charter. And I mean. As identified, there's no impact on our taxes to make this move. So I don't see the, the fear, so.
Anything to close, Council Bermansky?
I was waiting for you to say something.
All I was going to say is when is Council Broadhead just going to bring a motion for a boring bylaw for seventeen million dollars and just get her done?
Okay, I will. I, I will close. So there's probably, you know, no one more excited about a vibrant downtown. I'm, I've always been promoting activities going on. A vibrant downtown. Um, the argument still in this particular case is, you know, uh, it's mentioned by Counselor Mackay. That there was extensive public engagement. I don't think that's happened yet. And when we did get presented with the, you know, the one sheet presentation at our workshop. Um, there was things in there that we asked about, well, why aren't those on there anymore? Oh, well, administration decided we don't. We can't afford them or we don't want to do them. So that was really more of a. A change internally. And now we're kind of going forward with the version that perhaps a large portion of the public doesn't want. So I just, I'm just in favor of being very accurate with our planning and not spending dollars for inaccurate reports. So. I hope I get support in this one. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Pointings closed. That motion fails with Council Bermansky, Bermansky Hughes and Kilik in favor. All right, uh, we're back to you, Council Hughes with postponed motion zero three two, which is the service place operational review.
Right. So it said up to a hundred fifty thousand is funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. For a service place operational review to identify opportunities and process improvements and assist administration implementing any recommendations.
All right. Any questions on this one?
I just, I had a couple of quick questions. So to staff, um, I'm going to just look and look at you, Carrie, because you were here. When Ernest and Young did their review, I remember asking the city manager at the time, so I'm not looking to you, Mr. Fletcher, because you weren't there, so you have the hot seat. And said, is service place going to be included in that? And the answer was no. So when I read this background, it seems to allude otherwise. Was service place included in the operational review and didn't in-depth re-discussion?
Like the EY review?
Yep.
I will um have to get um Diane Inger or Danielle on the, on the call too, but it was not put through a comprehensive review. I said it was not put through a comprehensive. It was looked at at a very high level, but was not put through a comprehensive.
Thank you.
Diane and Danielle, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Um, I can jump in. Uh, thanks for the question and through the Merida Counselor. Yes, we did look at it from a high level. Um, however, they looked at all of recreation and parks facilities, programs, services and looked at um. Of the, I guess, the feasibility of uh and how operationally uh um sound the operation was. So. From a high level, they did look at, at everything, but we didn't go into a detail on service place alone.
Thank you. That's it.
Council Mackay.
There's something, uh, just a follow-up in relation to the background there. Um. I mean, certainly we've just come through two years of hell in relation to um impacts on. Not only society, but also impacts into um resource revenue from anything that we operated, whether it was a swimming pool. Whether it was service place, whether it was transit. So um. In some of the earlier discussions that we had when we were asking questions, there was um. I mean, we've seen some bounce back. I mean, certainly in actual use, but where we're lagging. And just confirm this, this is my question. Are we still lagging in relation to memberships? And that forms a big proportion of some of the challenges we're having right now?
Yes, that is correct.
And when prior about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, what was our membership? Seven thousand something?
It was in the six to seven thousand range.
We are now.
Four to five thousand.
And this is something not unique to St. Albert.
No, uh, based on from what I'm hearing from recreation, we are very similar to our regional competitors.
So I mean, just casting a look in relation to what your conversations are with comparators we have. Um, we really have got to lower this down or I got to get a taller chair because I can hardly see. Is, are there anybody forecasting that those numbers will bounce back or is that going to be a generational change now?
You know, I'm going to start this and then I'm going to have Danielle um cut in um on this uh question. But I think where you're finding a lot of, like, not even just in recreation, but a lot of the, the, the yearly memberships are down. And that is something that we're seeing across the board in a lot of different service industries. But I'll let Danielle probably have a lot more detail in her conversations than I would have.
Thanks for that, Carrie. Through the Chair to Counselor Mackay. Uh, what we're seeing is that the, you know, the numbers are responding as we're getting into more of the winter timeframes as well. We've seen a ten percent increase this month alone on our memberships. So that's showing a, a good, strong return. Um, that being said, we are noticing that this is taking longer to recover on the membership, membership side of our, of our business. So certainly. All the other, the rentals, the uh business and marketing, um, the advertising and sponsorship, our, our other components, our programs are all returning very strong. Um, this is something we're really going to have to watch through as we trend and most of our um research is saying that this is a slower recovery on the membership side. And it's because of the commitment that's required to make to that, um, to that contribution or that type of purchase. There's other factors that are influencing that in terms of inflationary costs and also um people having to choose where they're spending their dollars right now. So. We think there's a number of factors that are playing into that.
Thanks. I'm just bringing, uh, looking at something in the background or where you, um, administration has identified that for cost recovery. We average around eighty-three percent in the ten years prior to the pandemic. Um, and so that's cost recovery. Can you explain that? Is that cost recovery on the whole entire facility or? I'd like cost recovery on what?
I will have Danielle uh speak to that because she's more intimately involved.
Certainly, uh, through the Chair to Counselor Mackay. So when we calculate cost recovery, it's not apples to apples to how every municipality calculates that. We use the calculation in terms of cost of facility operations and take into consideration a number of different areas, including. Uh, maintenance costs, um, costs of staffing, uh, cost of materials, uh, contractors. And we also build into that than the revenues that we attribute through all the different areas that touch that specific facility. Service place, we are able to break out a little bit differently. Um, after the Sierra Report in twenty, in two thousand and eight, we were able to um. Um, quantify the expenses and the, and the revenues on that facility a little bit differently. So we are able to take those and apply them against each other to calculate a cost recovery rate of eighty-three percent.
In two thousand and eight, when we did the uh service place review, or I guess it was two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Right.
What was the cost for Sierra Systems to do that? Do you know?
Through the Chair to Counselor Mackay. I don't have that number at hand. I'm not sure if Miss Anger would have that available.
I tried to find the bylaw myself, Diane, and I couldn't find the number, but.
Are you talking about the one that you run?
Yeah.
Yeah, through the Mayor to Counsel Mackay. Um, I believe the number was about fifty to seventy-five thousand again, and we did many. So we had a Sierra Systems as part of the consultant review. We also did peer reviews. We did a communication review. We did internal staff review. So there's a lot of staff resources as well put into it. I believe the cost externally was fifty to seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Um, I'm just asking in relation, I'm. I mean, I guess maybe, I maybe Counsel Hughes, I mean, with everything that was going on, is this maybe one year premature? And you may be able to close it in your, or speak in your opening comments or something.
And I always have a reason to delay it. And I delayed it by one year already because of the COVID thing. So you can vote how you wish.
Okay. I, I'm just wondering whether maybe we're just premature and. That we don't know the world yet. But anyways, okay. Thank you very much for your responses.
Council Hughes, another question? Yeah, just one more. You mentioned the background of the eighty-three percent cost recovery over ten years, but we also know that for several years we had a hundred percent. So what was your cost recovery in twenty nineteen before the pandemic hit?
Thank you, Counsel. I'll uh ask for maybe a minute while folks probably madly checking their uh. And then I will defer to uh Diane Inger and Danielle.
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, I don't have the exact number on twenty nineteen specifically. I can go back and if you give me a couple of minutes, find that for you.
Okay, how about I will ask for it when I go to closing. How about that? Because I don't want to delay things further, but uh. I, I would love to get started whenever you're ready, Mayor.
Do you need that to debate?
Well, I'll use it for closing, so.
Through the, sorry, through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, we've got it now. It's eighty-four percent. In two thousand and nineteen, we were eighty-four percent. Um, and then in twenty fourteen, I think was the one year we hit the hundred percent cost recovery.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Go into the.
I'm going to go into debate. Thank you. So. I wanted to bring this forward last year. I realized that we were coming out of the pandemic. Nothing was stable. It would have been premature. We now have stabilized. I guess as far as you're going to start stabilizing. This is not about membership numbers. This is about. Whoever's talking down there, if they could just not, okay. It's not you guys, it's guys up there. Um. It's just distracting. This is not about membership numbers. This is about trying to do an efficiency review that really wasn't done. When the EY was brought forward, at the time it was just called an operational review and I asked, are we including service place? The answer was no. So if it has been touched, it's been touched from thirty thousand feet. And we still have an operational def- deficit of two point, um, projecting two point four. I'm asking for two point one. Uh, this year's a two point one million dollar subsidy. And so I just want to be able to allow. In part my own, come to peace with the situation and to know that this is as good as we can do. It hasn't been even reviewed. In any capacity of any substance since twenty oh eight. We're talking about fifteen years here. That the operations of this just have not been discussed. So I would like to empower these guys. Again, this is, there's two motions here that I've had. One, I really appreciate. I had the support on. This one is the same indications is that. A lot of people, myself included, are concerned about how much we're subsidizing this facility that when it was built, was planned, it would be cash neutral. Would not cost us anything. Out of the gate, we learned that wasn't the case, but it's back to costing us the same as it did in twenty oh seven in subsidies. And I think that we owe it to say, not about memberships, but how. Is there anything we can do differently to improve the situation? Is there anything we can do to find efficiencies? And again, working with the staff, working to figure out how we can do it. We did this last year for the library operational review. The library swore there was a. The library swore there was efficient as they could be when the, when Ian Y came forward. Majority of this council sat there and they said the Ian Y report is wrong. And we put for the operational review and you know what we did? We found some efficiencies. So I realize that staff may feel like, just give me one second. I don't want this to fall off. Got it. Spam no less. Okay, um, I realize that nobody wants to come back and say, we, look, I could have done something better. I didn't admit to it. And that's not what this is about. This is about saying, we're going to try to work with you to find efficiencies, but you can't tell me that they don't exist. And when I've had it, when we had that report that came forward and said we didn't find anything, it means they didn't look that hard. Because anyone could find efficiencies in any organization if the intention is to try to find them. And this is about investing to reduce the burden on taxpayers going forward. And I don't want to just simply say, because we have a discussion with the budget in August, and I said, we could just cut the budget by five hundred thousand deficit and let them figure it out themselves. But I don't think that's fair to staff. I would like to say, let's go through this operational view and see if there are any efficiencies. And if there are, then we can discuss how and when they could be implemented. And again, come forward in an educated, thoughtful manner and and do it. And if there are none, well, then we can say, you know what? We put a hundred fifty thousand of this. We can confidently say this is as good as it can be done the end. But if there are efficiencies, we can identify them. We can find implementation. And we're not just doing blind cuts. Because I don't ever want to do blind cuts. So that's what this is about, is just allowing this to happen and doing, hopefully getting the same or better results. And what we got from the library was a much smaller organization than what we were doing in service places. This is a very large item. I think we owe it to have an operational view in every department at least once a decade. This and then by doing that standard, this is well past overdue. This is not going to affect the taxes, so please don't bring that up. This is coming out of the capital. And quite frankly, I'd like it to come out of the stabilization if we can to move it by, for the recommendation to come out of the stabilization fund. Um, and that is the intention of this motion. So we can wait till twenty twenty-three, you can wait till twenty twenty-six. But we're no longer in the pandemic situation as far as shutdowns go. The current premier's indicated she's not planning to shut down the province again. Um, so this is the time we can just say, based on what we have is close to regular. How could, what are you doing? How can we improve the processes again to improve the user experience, to improve the efficiency of staff? And improve the enjoyment for staff because the less stress they're under, the better they work, the higher the retention and the more enjoyable it is for everybody. But we can't do that unless we actually prepare to try something different. And that just simply involves going through and coming to see what happens. And I have in here as well, implementation. So the intention is not report and run away. It's to report and discuss how we're going to work with staff to implement this. I do not want to report, show and run away. That's never been an intention and that's not going to be the intention of this one either. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on on debate? Uh, Counselor Hughes, I get your, I get your, your questions and they're always around service place. The E N Y report did take a good look at recreation. And so I do believe that, you know, that is service places included in that. We don't question the operating budget of Fountain Park Pool. We don't question the budget of our rinks. We don't question the budget of Grandin Pool. It's always this lens on service place. And I think that stems from probably, as you mentioned, uh, the public site vote in two thousand and one, I think it was?
Yeah, one.
Um, and I don't remember the cash neutral conversation, but um, it's foolhardy to believe any rec center in Alberta is ever going to be cash neutral. I think St. Albert has demonstrated, we're probably one of the best in the province because we did one year hit. One hundred, one year was around ninety-five. But right now, we're on average in the, in the, in the province. And I I agree with you that this needs to be done. A hundred percent do. Um, we have an audit committee that has its own budget. Um, and we have limited staff, uh, resources right now. We can't even carry through with the recommendations on Ernst and Young. So honestly, spending money in this tight economy right now um, is not, not something I want to do. I think it would be probably um, a good conversation to have at Audit Committee. Anything to close?
Yeah, I'm still hoping for council's support on this. This is overdue. If it doesn't come forward, this you're open for it every year till we get it. So you can end hate, end the pain now, or we can debate this the next two, three, two more budgets if you enjoy it. Because it's not going to die on this table. But I know that we can do this. It has not been identified. The fact that not even one efficiency was located means that they did not look hard. Because you can't tell me that nothing can be more efficient. And I know that we would see an outcome that would be back, we would get back this money in droves. Just, just, it will be easy to find a hundred fifty thousand dollars in capital in, in, in savings. And that savings would be every single year off the operating budget. And not only that, but the end goal here is a better working staff. It's probably going to have higher retention and happier to come to work. And I cannot justify saying that we're doing eighty-three, that's good enough, and we actually could be doing ninety and we have done a hundred. So we've done it before. I want to do it again, but I want to do it as well as we can and empower the staff. We do it without causing extra stress, but rather making their job better in the end. And that's the only way we're going to get there is by doing this. So I'm really hoping for your support today. Thank you.
Can we just ask a question through the Chair to Council? Can I just confirm with Counselor Hughes, the intent of the funding? You had mentioned that you wanted stabilization.
I'm, yeah, I'd like to change the stabilization.
Oh, you didn't say that.
I I kind of did in in the debate, but I changed it and like, if it's willing, I'm willing to go to stabilization. Okay, can change it on the fly. I'm sorry about that, Mayor Heron, if I didn't make it clear. I was not there to dupe you.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Counselor Bermatzky, Hughes and Kilik in favor.
Just a notice, it's going to be given for postponed motion for next year. I'll put it in right now.
Postponed motion thirty-five was given by you, Counselor Broadhead.
Madam Mayor, just point of order first. We're getting a lot of feedback from the gallery and it distracting. I just trying that they have conversations, but uh,
Sure, I haven't noticed. They've, they've heard. Okay. I hadn't noticed, but okay, thanks. Thank you, Counsel Kilik. Uh, Counsel Broadhead, I'll get you to read your motion. It's number thirty-five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The business case E N V zero zero one contaminated sites in the amount of thirty thousand dollars be funded. And that the funding source be used be the capital reserve.
All right, before I uh, yeah, Counsel Hughes has a question.
Yeah, so I'm wondering why it didn't make the list. Um, if it was really necessary and it's, it was on the unfunded list, what was the decision making on that? Because we still have capital and it's not a huge amount of money. So can someone explain the rationale?
Uh, um, I can begin and then I'll, I'll turn it over to uh, to Diane. Um, the rationale was simply a strict prioritization um, from one or eight, I was going to say one to Zed. I apologize, Zed, of all our projects. Uh, and based on that, we drew a red line um, over what we find we're uh, recommended for funding based on um, what we believe to be available and that fell just below the line. Um, so all the unfunded projects, it's not that they are unimportant. It's that uh, in our recommendation relative to one another, um, they find themselves there. Diane, did you want to add to?
Uh, through the chair, I think the only other thing that I would add on this one is that there's um, there's nothing wrong with what we're doing today in terms of of doing the monitoring. So it isn't, it wasn't really required. It could potentially um, save us some, some additional monitoring um, in the future, but it's not, it wasn't deemed absolutely essential. Um, so that was one of the lines. And I don't know if uh, Ryan, if he wants to jump on and and share anything else.
Uh, to, to the Chair to Counselor Hughes, Diane uh, nailed it. Um, we, we have a plan. Um, if this isn't funded and we, if it was funded, it could potentially um, I mean, clearly update a twelve-year-old plan, but ultimately that could save us um, some ongoing monitoring costs was the, the intent of the business case.
How much monitoring costs are we thinking?
I don't want to, I don't want to overstate. It could be zero, right? We could find that twelve years later, it's the exact same. It's um, it's hard to estimate how much it could save.
So just so I have an, I'm understanding about this because I'm sorry, there's just so many things going through my brain right now. Yes, we're doing an assessment of the risk management plan. So if we didn't assess it, we just continue to do our current management plan.
Correct.
Do we think that there's really a high risk that we're doing something that needs to be changed?
Um, uh, at this point, I think I'd need to get um, one of my colleagues to go into the monitoring that they've done over the last twelve years. We're getting quite into the, the details of what we're doing.
I don't want to go really into the weeds here. I just wanted, just um, and I, I need you to answer it, Ryan, but I just trying to figure out, you know, if we actually think it's needed or not, right? Like, we're doing something now. Do we actually think that we need to reevaluate at this time? Or do we think that we can wait a couple more years before we make that decision?
Um, perhaps I'll just jump in. Ryan can, can, I, I think that is, is part of the, the genesis of our recommendation. We, we are satisfied now that the, the risk level is acceptable. This will not go away and this is something we're going to have to do. Um, but the recommendation didn't come up this year because we're satisfied uh, in terms of the risk. Ryan, did you want to add on to that?
He needs a new microphone.
Yeah, do I have sound or nothing? Nah. Ryan, you're good. We can hear you. You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I tried to reboot the headset to kill the static, so hopefully I was successful. Um, so I wouldn't add anything further than uh, what uh, Mr. Fletcher uh, identified. Um, we, we can definitely postpone this if um, based on our prioritization and um, uh, bring this forward for a subsequent year. Obviously, the, the, the value is um, going to persist every year. The longer it gets from when we originally did the risk management plan. Every year that we get further away from it, the more value it is in redoing it. So getting the consultant in.
And just forgive me, if, did you mention the background or when we did the last management? Was it twenty eleven, you said?
Correct. So twelve years ago, being twenty twenty-three is when we would get to it again.
Is there a standard for what we should expect to have a reevaluation done?
Yeah, I'm looking, looking to my colleagues. I'll see if I get a note on that. But um, uh, I think twelve years is beyond our horizon of uh, what we'd expect, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Counsel Jolly, no questions. All right, I see no more questions. So go ahead, Counsel Broadhead.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thirty thousand to update our risk management plan uh, for contaminated sites uh, after twelve years. I don't think is an unreasonable cost. Uh, I remember uh, in twenty-ten when the uh, need to remediate the old uh, uh, nuisance grounds along uh, the Sturgeon River was brought before council. And quite honestly, for about the next five years, the entire treasury of St. Albert went to remediate those lands. And now, of course, we've got uh, you know, nice capped fields in there. And there's a football field and there's a rugby field and there's soccer pitches and there's a uh, park and all of those things. But that cost the treasury of St. Albert for many years and nothing else was done. And so from my perspective, after twelve years and we haven't done this yet, we should get about doing it so that our contaminated sites, at least we know what's going on there. And uh, and if there is something that we need to be aware of, that needs to be remediated sooner rather than later. Uh, at least we know what's going on. And so from my perspective, that piece of mine is worth thirty thousand dollars. If it's, if the rest of council doesn't believe so, that's fine. Uh, this is uh, my motion. So anyway.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. This, this is a case of really out of sight, out of mind. You know, it's underground. We don't see it, but it, it, it really could be a, a high risk, but we don't know. So updating a plan on, you know, to me, an environmental plan should be updated every ten years at least. We've gone a couple of years past that. Um, getting an, an outside independent consultant is a requirement to report that to the government. And this is just really about uh, risk mitigation. It, it's really that simple, I think. And uh, uh, the environment is, is something that's high on council's priority list. Um, and I, I, I really think we should support this. It's a small amount. Thirty thousand dollars to get an outside consultant to update the plan, provide that plan to the government. Um, if, if we were to find um, something wasn't to our environmental standards, I would like to know that sooner than later. So I, I think this is a good investment of thirty thousand dollars to uh, to, to update the plan and either know that we're in good shape or we're not. Thank you.
All right, I see no more comments. Counsel Broadhead to close?
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes by majority with Counsel Hughes opposed. We are on to, I'll go for a couple more and then we'll take a break, guys. So uh, postponed motion zero four seven is Counsel Bermansky's motion on housing options for affordability. Oh, you withdrew that one. Right, okay. Sorry, no. It's me. Oh, I guess I should get organized. So postponed motion uh, zero four, sorry, forty-nine, which is on Oakmont Trail. Let me read it in. That the rec zero four five Oakmont Trail face to be unfunded in two thousand and twenty-three, resulting in segment one, Old Bellrose Drive, being returned to a predisturbance condition after the northeast servicing project is complete. And that six hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred be returned to the capital budget. Questions, Counsel Hughes?
A couple of quick questions. I'm going to jump Counsel, uh, Counsel Jolly ahead on this one because I had the same one as her on this one. Um, she, I know that, you know, I can wait, Counsel Jolly, if you want to. You know, if you don't care if I get it.
So Jolly did.
Bring forward that thing.
Question, so let her answer her.
Okay.
Ask her own question.
Then I'll ask my thing is, I have a motion following this to do it to the Oakmont Trail standard or to the Redwood Trail. What's the difference between Counsel, uh, Mayor Heron's motion and my motion? In that my, I intended to say go back to gravel and have it look the same. And just add the um, basic amenities like benches and garbage cans and that sort of thing. I don't know who I'm supposed to look at here. Who's supposed to be? I'll look at you. So that was my intention of doing it and that's what I meant to do. It was do it to that gravel standard. And my understanding was that if we didn't do it, that gravel standard was just to be left as mud. And so Mayor Heron's motion is to um, just simply unfund it and then basically return it to that, again, gravel standard. So if her motion passes, would it go back to gravel standard? And other than the um, additions, is what else would be required to put it to the Spruce Forest standards?
Thank you. And now that you've looked at me, I'll defer that to Danielle.
Through the Chair to help Counselor Hughes, I'll um, engage in a while and that she prepare the responses to those.
And thank you for the question through the Chair to Counselor Hughes. Uh, currently, Old Bellrose Drive is a historic gravel road. Um, it is not built to, to any trail standard, um, and in fact, probably predates any of our existing standards. Um, so our understanding of the intent of uh, Mayor Heron's uh, motion is to simply, once the northeast servicing project disturbance is done, to return it to the condition that it currently is. Um, our understanding of your motion, Counselor Hughes, is that you were looking to upgrade it to what we now consider our gravel trail standard, which is what you would see at Greenons White Spruce Park. Um, that gravel trail standard is um, built to a certain degree. It has um, compaction testing. It has limestone finds on the top. Um, so they are basically two different things. Um, there is no standard for um, what we understand to be the intent of Mayor Heron's uh, motion. Um, it's just restoring it to what it was, um, which is kind of standard practice for um, utilities projects that have to go in and disturb spaces. Um, whereas we understood the intent of your motion to bring it to a trail standard, um, just one that we typically um, have only introduced for conservation areas.
So would it have, still have gravel? It would be, again, be a gravel road. It wouldn't just be dirt? Or would it just be filled in and then that's it?
Through the Chair, um, I may ask uh, Donnie or Tim to jump in because I'm not as familiar with the reclamation processes uh, that utilities uses.
Thank you, Amanda. Um, through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, for any typical capital projects, what we would reinstated back, it's to its original condition where we found it, unless there is a requirement to upgrade it. So what it's there today is what we. So what it's there today is what we would be returning it back to once the utilities project is completed.
So not compacted in the reason.
Not compacted. And what would be the difference in budget between just returning it to? A gravel road, not compacted versus the White Spruce Forest? Like, you must have an idea, not, I don't know if it's you, Donnie, or somebody. Needs to have an idea of how much it costs per meter to do this.
I'd probably have to find that answer, not top of my head. Maybe Tim, he can help if he have the information, otherwise we can get back to council.
Yeah, I would ask if we take that as uh away from the meeting and get back to you on that uh those specifics.
Okay, I'll let Counselor Jolly ask her questions and see if I have anything else after her.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. Um, so to administration, how much would it cost to put in garbage cans, benches, kind of per whatever our standards are?
Through the chair to Counsel Jolly. Oh, sorry. Sorry, through the chair to Counsel Jolly.
Going to you anyway, Danielle.
I would look to Amanda Wild. She's again done research. Go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Counsel Julie, and through the chair. Um, it would not be um within our standards to add any trail-based amenities to the existing condition. Uh, because it is not maintained for pedestrian access. It is a former road, and it is a road right of way. Uh, so it is not formally a trail in any way. So to add. Um, trail-based amenities, which are um one garbage can, one bench for every four hundred meters. Uh, we can find exact numbers for you, but we would have to take that away. Um, but we wouldn't suggest that. As this isn't a trail as it currently sits, and it is not maintained to any type of trail standard. Uh, that we wouldn't add trail-based amenities to the existing condition.
So, Mr. Fletcher, um, I don't know if you've ever been walking at um Riverlot fifty-six. Um, there are, that's not trail standard. Uh, there are garbage cans, there are benches. That's kind of what I'm looking for. Um. Would fifty thousand dollars kind of be able to put in a couple of things there? Sorry, I thought I gave it meds notice of this question, so I thought there'd be an answer.
No, you you did, counselor, and we're working it through. Um, so so yes, fifty thousand dollars would certainly put. Some stuff there. Um, I think there are staff are working madly here to figure out uh what that might look like.
So I guess my question to mayor is, would you consider it friendly, just to add in that little bit to add benches, garbage cans?
Yeah, that's it's fine. Um. There's a garbage can right there. Going into going into the road, and there's probably more garbage cans there than there is in our downtown, as we heard yesterday. Uh, and you know, a bench or two is, I think fifty thousand is excessive, excessive, and you do for ten. Yeah. But let it when we get into debate, what what we why don't we make that a separate motion?
Sure.
Okay. Any more? Okay, sorry, Council McKay, a question?
I have a couple. Um. And some building off of just that conversation, but. Um, the uh six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars approximately of the provincial grant funding that would be uncommitted if this. Uh, motion passes. I mean, yeah, I mean, right now, you're saying in the background that we can use it for other capital projects. I mean. The provincial grant funding wasn't just dedicated to this portion of that Oakmont Trail, where no danger of losing that.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor um Kilik. No, what we're doing is estimating. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, Council McKay.
He's better looking.
I'm looking at the name, and it's right there. Um, this is what we've estimated that we would apply either our MSI funding for, so we haven't applied for it yet. So we're not in danger of losing any of the grant funding.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I was clarified. I mean, if we're gonna. I mean, if it was dedicated, we would probably lose it. I mean, um, in relation to standards, so I mean, right now, in the winter time. Because that's not part of our trail system, we don't clear that of snow, do we?
Through the chair to Counselor McKay, we don't do not clear that area of snow unless it's for road access, and I'm not sure if um. Mr. Mason could comment on that at all, or utilities, but we don't clear that for public access, and so that's kind of where we're. Alluding to the fact that if it's a paved trail, it would get cleared to pave standards and in future service standards, but it currently it wouldn't be.
Would they clear gravel too?
And through the chair to camp, I think the mayor asked about a gravel trail. We do not clear gravel trails. We only clear um paved trails.
Okay.
Alright, so I mean, if we were to, I mean, add these, I mean, one-offs, aren't we? Shouldn't we be adding them actually through the service inventory and service standard? I mean, that whole process rather than just doing one-offs? Wouldn't isn't that usually the best way of dealing with? That way it's on there?
What do you mean?
Well, in in the sense that we have the uh service standards, the inventory. That outlines what the level of service would be for trails, what the level of service would be for. Snow clearing, what the level of, like, what would be in each one of those things? Shouldn't we be amending that versus just doing one-offs?
So, so, customer, what's the one-off?
One-off, the potential one-off is the conversation that preceded my questioning around adding benches.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Benching are uh uh potentially. Like, what if your amenities? So if you're gonna put a bench. And you're gonna put a uh garbage can, but you're not going to maintain the path, why would you do that unless? So. I'm just saying, I think, is is that not the normal process?
Yeah, we're gonna treat the garbage cans and the benches as a separate motion.
I agree, but I'm just asking, isn't that where it should be? I'm asking administration, and that wouldn't that be the actual appropriate place for it? We would have to amend that versus. One-off.
Through the chair to Counselor McKay, um, it's actually in our engineering standards that we designate um benches and garbage cans along trail standards, so that every four hundred meters is in our engineering standard.
However, the servicing of those is a service level standard, absolutely, counsel, right? So to to clear those garbage cans on a timely basis to uh to to. Cut grass and in in this case, right, plow snow potentially uh or maintain the benches. Those are all service uh requirements that would impact public operations.
And I I guess, I mean, I'll wait. I'm I'll wait in relation to um. The next motion or postponed motion in relation to phase three, because I think that's a little separate, so I'll I'll hold that question.
Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. And thank you for, Mr. Fletcher, for bringing up grass cutting. Appreciate that. Uh. Uh, the it the questions I have it, it so it is uh. Digging this up um and putting in all the pipes, is it on schedule and it for? Like, for completion in twenty twenty-three, like, there?
That that's part of the northeast servicing, and I'll defer to to Donnie um to talk about the specifics.
So.
Thank you uh for the question uh through the chair to Counselor Kilik. Um, the design is progressing as we speak now. Um. So most likely the tendering uh the. Construction procurement will roll into twenty twenty-three because of the funding. That is approved for twenty twenty-three to move forward. So right now, it's on schedule for completion by year end, and most likely we'll have some landscaping. Components to be transferred to the twenty twenty-four. Um, completion as well. So but most bulk of the piping will be in ground for twenty twenty-three is the expectation.
So, question, could this be deferred till? Twenty twenty-four? It sounds it sounds like we're still gonna be digging up the ground and. In in construction mode and resurfacing or deciding whether we should fund it as a. As a full trail or, you know, a dirt road. Uh, level, it it would that not be more appropriate for twenty twenty-four discussion rather than twenty twenty-three?
So the piping uh requirement is urgent uh in terms of uh priority that we need to get that completed, but we could. If uh council is debating whether we should complete the trail or not, we can compact and leave it the way the condition that it exists today without having the trail built. Um, so the piping, I wouldn't recommend us postponing the.
No, 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 no. No, it's it's just to say what. We're we're debating a trail and and what level it should be at. But really, the decision whether we fund it or not. It it doesn't happen this year. I mean, we're the construction to put that. Uh, northeast servicing in is gonna take all summer and fall and. Twenty-three, we.
Well, the only thing I'd say, and and Danielle can back me up, is the uh original um. Recommendation saw that as they were filling in behind that construction, they could actually prep it to a standard trail standard. Um, and so there are some some efficiencies to be achieved by doing that at the same time.
Projects together and find some efficiencies.
Yeah.
Through the chair to Counsel Kilik, that's exactly what we were planning to do, is take the work that Donnie had underway to do the northeast servicing, and when they came back in, we would apply this layer to get the trail. Completed, and that was gonna have some cost savings resulting from that.
Okay, so just so I understand, then, when we say we're gonna backfill and compact, does that mean we're gonna put? Road crush. Uh, because that's what's there right now. It's it's an old road bed. It's road crush. It's very walkable, very, you can bicycle on it, you can. You know, drag your kid's wagon on it. It's actually in pretty good shape. Um. It it is that what we're saying, or are we just saying we're gonna compact? Topsoil and leave it. I'm just to get clear. What what's the plan?
Again, I'll I'll ask Donnie to chime in as we return it to the current, if this were just a um. Um. A capital project unrelated from the trail, what would the state be? And I believe it would be to return it to the the state it was before we put a shovel into the ground, but I'll defer to Donnie.
Through the chair to Counselor Hughes, that is the intent of the current project, to return it back to the state that that you have found. But to Danielle's point, we combine this project with the Oakmont Trail project, if that's to be funded. We can definitely prep the underground to receive the gravel base and the asphalt on top. And then have it completed as well to the trail standard. That's the synergy that we might lose. Um, if you just cancel the trail project and just leave only the northeast servicing to be completed.
Okay, so we're gonna compact the topsoil. We're gonna put. Road crush. Level road bed to replace it to the way it is. We could put. We're doing that because I I've heard we need that road access or. For servicing equipment or getting equipment in there in case of a an emergency or access to the pump station or something. Um, so we have to have that built. And what we're trying to figure out is. It it's not to our trail. Standard, but it it's a road. Which is actually better than a trail. We could put garbage cans on it. I I I recognize we. May not be able to. Have our snow brushes remove the the snow. But again, we have to be able to get in there and. Empty those garbage cans. I'm thinking specifically emptying garbage cans in the winter. Would we be able to do that?
Through the chair to Counselor Hughes, maybe a Tim has more information on the actual scope, because it's part of the design. Team, maybe Tim, if you want to add any clarification to the standard that you were building, if there was no trail to be built.
Yeah, and through the chair to Counselor Kilik, so. It is standard for capital project to restore to the original condition, so. In a in a sense, if we are obligated to restore to a road, that's gonna be a higher cost. If through the engagement of the stakeholders, the users, operations, whatnot, it is determined that that road. Does not to be need to be restored to the extent it is, we're gonna search for the lowest cost alternative. Because the the road itself is used for. Minimal traffic as it is, and in the event that Oakmont Trail does proceed, that access for vehicular traffic is not going to exist. So that's gonna be a consideration through the uh scope development.
But thank you, and 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 that that's a great clarification. I was trying to get to that. More succinct question, so that's my fault, but. Restoring it to the current condition could actually be more expensive. Than if we went ahead and restored it. To a trail.
It's a six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar savings. But that would be, that's already included in the utility budget to restore the pre-disturbance.
Pre-disturbance at a at a trail. Level, and that's already built in?
No, that was it is.
Road.
Yep.
Okay, I'm. I'll admit I'm confused.
Okay.
I I was hoping to get clarification.
It was, I I did a B I R. I said, what's the difference between pre-disturbance and putting it to a trail? It was six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars delta. So that's where the motion came from.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you both for administration's clarification and America's clarification, because I. I was confused after reading all the information.
That's a big one, yeah.
But if if I may, your worship, um, I think the the one other question was, um, if amenities were put in, notwithstanding the surface. Um. How would we service that? And perhaps if I could just maybe ask Jay Mason to chime in. Um, if there were benches and garbage cans there with the X stand.
Can we wait to that motion? We don't even know if that motion.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, like like we're just talking about. One thing at a time. I think Counsel Jolly has said. Depending on where the next couple of votes go, she might put that, or she might not. Right, thanks. Counsel Hughes.
Um, you know, I'm not gonna ask a serious question. I like I could go further about this, trying to fit the trail thing, but. Um, I just wanted to just let you know that it says on my motion phase three, but I actually mean, it's actually phase two.
It's they call it, it's it's called segments. Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing.
Segment.
Segments, yeah.
It's very confusing.
Yeah.
Because segment two, and you should made all the segments and phases the same number. But I'm just telling you that my motion following it is not a phase three charter. It's a phase two, just so we have clarification here, but may not be necessary. That's it.
No more questions? Okay, um. I'll I'll start with, if I had all the money in the world, I would absolutely build Oakmont. Trail. To what? Uh, our staff has presented to us. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. It would be great. Um. But we don't, and we have to try to watch our pennies, and six hundred eighty thousand dollar savings is is significant, in my opinion. Uh, we have a lot of other capital needs in the city that this money could be used towards, and we could obviously use MSI anywhere. Um, a lot of different projects would qualify. I walk this area. It's it's very, very limited, not a lot of people walking there. Um. Again, I I'd love the fact that our staff is trying to find efficiencies, but of the entire Oakmont Trail. Project Charter that I think was, you know, envisioned when Counsel McKay put it on the floor two, three years ago now, Counsel McKay. Was to really get the connection that's missing, which is between the Botanica. And the Oakmont Pedestrian Bridge, and that's why, you know, that's my next motion. I'll I'll go there next, but this one segment. You can walk on it. You can actually pull, as you said, Counselor, kill it, pull a sled. Um, cross-country ski on it. There's dogs on it. Um, I might do a motion to make it an off-leash dog park one day, because it's very well used for that purpose. But it's just quite natural, and it's um. It's it's open and wide, and it does not need this. Again, if I could do it, I would, but right now I'm trying to save a few pennies and six hundred eighty thousand dollars elsewhere is my priority, so I don't have much else to add. Anyone else? Okay, call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that passes unanimously. So that was forty-nine, right? Yes.
So mayor, I've got a motion prepared for the garbage cans for that segment, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so Counsel Hughes, are you gonna put your motion forward for thirty-four now?
Yeah. I still am.
So, but yeah, so. Put read it into the record.
Okay, just gonna get to it here.
And then Counsel Jolly, I'll ask if the gravel trails has a has an engineering standard and service level for. Benches and garbage cans.
Okay, so it's gonna be phase two, Renee. So it's at the Oakmont Trail Phase Two, which what we just discussed, project charters reduced in scope to restore the trail to the same standards. It's located in the White Springs Forest gravel. At Co-Right Away Utility Trail, and that the revised project charter is brought to council for consideration approval by May fifteenth to twenty twenty-three.
There was no, they didn't give us a price for that, did they?
No, that's what the intention of the motion is. It's to. Give me a number.
So how do we vote on this, Diane, without knowing what it's gonna cost?
But we're not approving it, mayor.
Oh, it's just sorry to do the.
Just give me a project charter is what I'm saying.
Okay. Alright, sorry, you're right.
Okay.
Uh, any questions on that? The only question I would have, and it's probably, I don't know, engineering standards for. For, I was trying to deal with Counsel Jolly's potential motion.
Yeah.
The gravel trail that we have in White Spruce Forest, would it have engineering standards for benches and garbage cans?
Yeah, they would.
Amanda?
Yeah, through the chair, uh, they do follow our multi-use trail standards. We don't differentiate for the site furnishings piece, so it would come with it.
Okay, so Counsel Jolly, do you wanna? I'm just wondering, well, we'll get to you after we vote on this, Counsel Jolly, because you still might wanna.
Yep.
Do it, even because this is just a project charter.
Yep.
Counsel McKay.
I I, you know, so thanks for the clarification, because I was initially thinking that it was the portion of Riverbank Landing we were gonna work with and.
Yeah.
And I could see some of the challenges, so. I mean. Help me, um, Amanda, in the sense that this section has got some. Um, challenges, he, you know, challenges was. Refresh my memory without me going all the way back to the project charter. Was it intended to bring it up to like? Asphalt standards, and then we were gonna bring stairs and things like that where we needed to go over the outfall? Was that what the intent was?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel McKay, there's three segments, so segment one, all three segments were to bring it as close to standard as possible, understanding that it has not been built to date, because there are challenges. Um, not so much with segment one, but with two and three. Um, so the intention was to bring it as close to. Um, so the intention was to bring it as close to standards as we possibly could, um, knowing that particularly for segment three, um, meeting our standards, which includes no stairs, um, in particular, was going to probably not work.
Um, okay, and you you did say in the background, although that you had done significant consultation with the public, and you had, this had never actually been presented as a alternative?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Mackay, that is correct. When we assessed um, the different trail types, uh, we didn't pro- provide the option of gravel trail to the public in this section. Um, in particular, because um, it is already, you know, somewhat degraded, but but gravel surfacing. Um, and it, uh, we use gravel trails where subsurface disturbance is less desirable, so particularly in environmentally sensitive areas, cuz one of the advantages to asphalt in our current standards for Red Willow Trail is four-season use. Um, in winter, a gravel trail can't be cleared, um, can't be compacted down to accessibility standards. Um, so it didn't, in our opinion, really meet that threshold of um, improving service. Um, without being able to clear it in winter and providing that accessibility component, um, that would still be missing in winter. Only in summer, it would be an improved surface compared to uh, existing condition if we moved it to a granular trail.
So right now, you don't do any of the clearing on the granular trails in, I mean, is is it just uh, Green Nun's Whitespruce Forest that has that standard right now, or do we have other trails in the river valley that are similar?
So, uh, we have two formal, uh, newer trails. Um, I believe council, um, is aware of previous directives to move from gravel to uh asphalt for most trails in the city. Um, so formally, we have the Coal Mine Park uh trails, which are in an environmentally sensitive area. That was where the standard was first developed. Um, and then it's been applied to Green Nun's Whitespruce Park, but those are the only two locations under the new standard.
So they were, they were moved to gravel for environmental reasons, but this section of Oakmont Trail doesn't need meet environmental or is not the same environmental standards?
Yeah, it because it's an existing disturbed corridor, um, we're not doing any harm by upgrading the trail to an uh improved standard, whereas in things like Gray Nun's, um, those are in areas where um, deeper excavation would cause issues with the trees, um, or the aqua pipeline in uh, in particular for Gray Nun's. Um, the granular trails are also typically narrower, although we can vary that width um, as they are in coal mines. So in order to reduce the amount of tree loss, um, on top of the root impacts, the granular's trail standard was introduced. It's a much shallower excavation uh, and narrower in width, um, to reduce the environmental impact from the trails.
All right, I don't wanna rehash the old argument that we just had in relation to what pre-existing conditions was. So do you feel, I mean, this motion really is just to bring it back. Um, do you feel that you would have to have more uh, public engagement as part of that? Or I mean, or do you know at this particular time, this is something you'd have to perhaps take away?
Uh, through the chairs to Counselor Mackay, um, we do believe that it would be prudent to at least inform those who participated because they were given options of which this wasn't uh, presented to the public or considered originally by the project team. Um, so what would we need to reengage? Maybe not um, on the segment, but at very minimum, we'd need to inform, but we would need to come back uh, and have a a look at our plan and who we talked to and what their concerns were, uh, and formulate a plan going forward for engagement if necessary.
And, um, Mr. Fletcher, do you think May fifteenth is achievable, or?
Uh, again, I will actually defer to uh, to Danielle and Amanda, who have been through this process before. I think, um, a- again, understanding the reduced level of public consultation.
Through the Chair to Counselor Mackay, um, so I've had conversation feel that is an achievable timeline. There is some uh prep work and some planning work that needs to go into that we just take into account, but we can, I feel we can achieve the the May timeline.
Thank you.
Counselor Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is kind of a a safety question regarding cycling. So I know that I personally can't bike on gravel cuz I would fall and get gravel embedded in my skin. Um, is that kind of something we take into consideration when we're building for accessibility?
Yeah, thank you for the question, um, through the Chair, Counselor Jolly. Uh, gravel trails are generally considered under trail standards as an accessible surface. The way that we build our trails is a top layer of limestone fines, which is what you see at Gray Nun's, uh, which but you don't see in the existing condition. So it does compact those down, and they do become almost like cement. Um, so it's not the loose gravel you may be envisioning. It does make certain um, folks nervous, um, particularly depending on the the type of bike that you're using or the speeds that you want to go. Um, so it's not as comfortable um, for everyone as asphalt or as familiar, um, perhaps, uh, as asphalt, um, but it does meet accessibility guidelines, and it it is not kind of the loose road crushed gravel that you might be envisioning.
Okay, thank you. So kind of good for everyone except for road bikers?
It is a bit tricky on on thin tires, and again, from from a winter access, only fat bikers can use it in winter.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't even have an estimate of what X number of meters in gravel costs? That surprises me. Through the Chair to Counselor, uh, to Mayor, to Mayor Heron, uh, Amanda, did you want to add something to that? I saw you come.
Yeah, through the chair, we do have, um, costs. What we're seeing, um, depending on the scope and scale of our gravel costs, though, have been, um, wildly different. I can give an example of two projects this year. One was approximately, uh, for, uh, sorry, a hundred and twenty dollars per linear meter. A much smaller project was in excess of four hundred dollars a linear meter. Um, so we do need to go back, um, and it really does depend on how much how much economies of scale that you can achieve. So we would want to go back with the Northeast Servicing Project, um, in particular, to achieve those economies of scale because that price is so variable, and that's why we haven't provided it in the report.
All right, oh, Counselor Killik, go ahead.
Just, eh, but but if we go back and do this as gravel or even crushed gravel, it, how how do we do snow removal? Is it, this is a for for a season trail that we saying we can or can't do it on gravel, uh, on the the special fine crushed gravel, that we would do it?
Through the Chair to Counselor Killik, our standard on gravel trails is we don't clear them in winter. So Mr. Mason be able to give more details if you need it, but our gravel trails are not cleared, so people can use them for walking, snowshoeing, fat biking, that kind of thing, but not for um, they're not cleared for use for clear trail walking.
So we would have a trail, but it would be gravel, but we wouldn't be able to use it in the winter. I mean, you could use it, I guess, but we not everybody. It would, it would really restrict. You know, you, it would, it would be icy. We we wouldn't go in there and put our our little new road, you know, plow thing with a chipper on the back, you know, chip that that we're buying for Jay. We're we're not we're not gonna be able to use that to stop people from slipping and sliding around on it, and we'll get resident complaints as as to why.
Point of order. I think we're entering into debate here.
We might be, and and don't forget what we just approved. That's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna get, and 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 service.
It it is that, is that correct?
Through the Chair to Counselor Killik, so it is our standard to not clear our granular trails. So that is because they're typically in natural areas. People can snowshoe on them. They can walk on them. Um, in certain areas, they can fat bike on them, but they are not cleared for for four-season use. Um, and Mr. Mason, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, thanks through the Chair, uh, Counselor Killik. Yeah, there is issues too. Um, obviously, our equipment is not light. Um, and and gravel trails are typically not built to the roadway standards that you would see. Um, so damage to those those uh roadways uh does occur uh by running those pieces of equipment down there during the winter. Um, so there is some challenges.
Thank you.
Lots of people cross-country skiing on that road. All right, I see no more questions. I'm gonna enter into debate, and Council will get through this one and then next one, and then that's done with Oakmont Trail, and that sounds like a good time for a break.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so sorry, I just have fifteen tabs open right now, and my mouse died. So just have one of those days. Okay, so the intention of this is just a project charter. I just wanna know how much it can cost and how much I think it is. We already know the variations could be anywhere between a hundred and four hundred. And uh, it would leave us an idea of what we just approved, which is just the road versus what it would be if it was a trail. That's it. And then we can have the discussions about the pros and cons and make a decision. We don't have a solid number. We don't really be able to compare everything accurately. And so that's all I'm saying is that why don't we just find out what it is, have it come back to us before they have to make a final decision what's going on? And then we'll say what we're gonna do. That's all there is to it. So this is pretty harmless. We're not agreeing to anything. We're just gonna investigate. If you guys want to investigate, if you don't, and you're like, no, solid road period, and that's it. Great. But you know, the the only thing I have here is that we do have trail standards, right? And so if we're gonna do a trail, let's do it right. It's kind of what we're doing, or we're gonna just not call this other thing a trail. We can throw a couple garbage cans in there if you want, but it's not gonna be a trail. We have development standards for everything else that we do. And so we should do a trail to development standards. If nothing else, at least figure out what the costs are and then make a decision on that, because right now we're making a decision that even when what we're giving up. So that's what I'm just saying is give the administration, they wanna come forward earlier than May fifteenth. Great. I just want to give them enough time that they weren't gonna be rushed to make it to happen and come back and tell us what it is. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else on debate? Counselor Jolly?
Thanks. I was going back and forth on this one several times, so I'm I'm gonna be content, no matter what the outcome is. Um, right now, I'm gonna oppose the motion because I want this section of trail to be accessible to everyone who wants to use it. Um, and eh, you know, eh, if it costs more, I I'm okay with that. So, um, that's why I'm opposing it at this time. Thank you.
All right, um, I see no one else wanting to speak. I'll just say my intention of the first motion was to save us some money, and so gravel roads not, it's gonna cost us money, so the priority for Oakmont Trail is from Botanica to pedestrian bridge. Um, how many calls have you had, any one of you complaining about the condition of this segment of Oakmont Trail? None. Goes back to exactly where it was for zero dollars. That's what I'm supportive of. So Counselor Hughes, I get it that you wanna just get the the numbers, but I don't even wanna spend time because I probably would never support even a even a couple hundred dollars. This is, it's fine as it is. Um, and interestingly enough, Counselor Jolly, a friend of ours, we were, I was sitting at lunch with today, and she was saying that she actually takes her bike to Fort Saskatchewan to find trails that aren't paved. That we we need some in this community that people can can mountain bike on, and we've got a fair amount of paved trails. So I get what you're trying to say, but people are leaving our community to go elsewhere for non-paved trails. So, and I think you know who I'm talking about. That U D I lunch, so.
I think it's my partner you're talking about.
Anyway, so, um, I just don't wanna waste any more time, so let's call for the vote. Oh, no, you can close, sorry, absolutely.
Thank you, cuz here's the deal. We just told administration to restore it back to its original condition, and administration also just said five minutes ago that there's a possibility that if we did a trail, it could be cost less than doing a road. So if we bring this forward, we can say, what are the costs of the road? What are the costs of the trail? It might be cheaper to the trail. And then we can make a decision which way we're going, but we actually might have de facto in the wording of the last motion insisted on a road, which could cost us more than building a narrower trail. So that's why I'm saying, let's just find out what's going on and make the best decision from a fiscal and community standards point of view. That's it. I'm not, and I'm not even saying that when it comes forward, I'm gonna say yes on May fifteenth or before, cuz I don't know what the numbers are. I don't know what the costs and benefits are, but I don't wanna lock us into a road if the trail's actually cheaper and we'll still accomplish the same goal. That's it.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And the motion passes with Counselor Jolly and Mayor Heron opposed, and then we'll move on to forty-eight, and I'm gonna be super fast with this one, cuz I think you guys understand what I'm trying to do. I'll repeat the motion in. Oh, I'm on the wrong page. Uh, twenty-nine. What motion is this? Forty-eight, sorry, postpone motion forty-eight that directs zero, four, five, six, two and three be separated, and segment two is unfunded. This will reduce the two thousand and twenty-four budget requirement by one million, zero, forty-one, six hundred dollars, and return this to the capital budget for other projects. Any questions on this one? Yep.
So uh, and help me, are we out of sequence? I mean, are we out of?
Questions.
Yeah, I know. So help me, are we out of sequence? So I mean, in the sense that we just voted on potentially sending away segment two to determine whether or not it should be a gravel, could be a gravel.
Segment two or segment one?
Segment, what was it? Segment one. I just need help on that.
Yeah, segment one.
So I got caught on the phase one and the segments and.
You had me confused for a sec.
I know, I I like, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this thing, and it looks anatomically incorrect, is what it looks like. So I
No questions?
I appreciate the clarification.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure, because I thought, why did we just vote on that?
Okay, Counselor Jolly, your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I'd also like kind of clarification. So from my understanding, we would be skipping trail section two, the four hundred and ten meters. It's quite steep right behind houses. Is that the intent of this?
No, segment two goes from the pedestrian bridge to approximately, I know, uh, the first house that backs out of the river, cuz that's where the trail starts. So from the pedestrian towards, um, the old Bell Rose Road that we just, um, returned to predisturbance condition. Nothing to do with, um, behind the houses, uh, on the hill towards Botanica. Can we share a picture?
I was gonna say.
Yeah, it would be awesome.
Try and flash up a map.
Yeah.
Through the chair, we can, um, get a map advanced. Um, I'm not sure if you wanna do your break now, and we can have a map pulled up by the time you're back, just as a thought, or what we can do is if you give us a couple minutes, we can secure a map.
Okay, why don't we take a break now?
Okay.
Is it ugly sweater? Is it fancy schmancy? Is it cowboy? I have to go to a holiday party at like four, so I probably should can't wear pajamas to that party and then I'm coming straight to this. All right. Are you going to the staff party? Okay, I I think um we're gonna get a picture up of segment. I'm talking what's the difference between segment two and segment three. Do we have? Can we share screens?
Yeah, through the chair to counselor to the mayor, um, just to provide some context and an overview. So this whole project is actually Oakmont Phase Two. And what you'll see is in the orange, you'll see segment one. That's the segment we've been talking to in the last two postponed motions, which is Old Bell Rose. In the blue, you'll see segment two, which is up by Otter Crescent. And then the yellow is segment three. So when we allude to segments one, two, and three, that will give you a better reference point and a visual image of what we're talking about.
Okay, so can you keep that up there for a bit?
Sure can.
Well, um, so does that make everybody clear what I'm trying to do? Ken calls the blue section the butt, just so you know. Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
So it seems that it's disjointed still. There's still not like there's missing connectivity. Is it because?
I can answer that. Go right to her. Cause I live very close by. So you see the gap between the yellow and the blue? There is a trail there. Red Wheeler Trail exists right there.
Already.
Right there. It's there's a sidewalk on the houses side of the street. There's Red Wheeler Trail on the riverside of the street.
And it's paved?
And it's paved. It's exact same as you would see anywhere else in the River Valley.
Okay.
Uh, and there's a garbage can and a bench.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and then the bridge i- is right where the the right side of yellow. Thank you. That's right. It's where the pedestrian bridge is. So when you go from the pedestrian bridge towards the blue.
Yeah.
Red Willow Trail then goes in through the houses. And so there's a little bit of a, no, no, the other way up. Up to the green space. Right there. That's red. Red World Trail continues through there. And then it hooks right and goes and meets right there. Perfect. So the trail exists there.
And is it marked like like people know?
Yep. And then what is the the blue, the highlighted blue on that map? Is um across the street from a bunch of houses and it's um a goat trail. It's just grass.
Yeah.
It's goat trail. So what administration is proposing is that they pave it into a Nashville trail. So murder what's there. And then at the very top of the blue section, um, Red Wheel Trail starts again and goes behind um some beautiful homes and then connects into Bellrose, Old Bellrose Drive. Segment one. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Can I ask a couple more questions?
Yep.
So when I see the picture of um Okay, please never call something phases and segments again because it's just it's I'm easily confused. But okay, so there's section two that the mayor was referring to.
The blue section?
Yeah, the blue section. When you have a picture beside it, which is trail section two, four and ten meters.
Yep.
It doesn't look this wide enough to put a trail there. Like, are we gonna have to take down trees to do that, too?
Probably, yeah, in some some areas.
Through the chair to count to uh Counselor Hughes, I'll get I'll pass along demand as they've been working on this through design.
Yeah, certainly. So as part of the feasibility study, um, in certain, um, and this is taken at the narrowest point of segment two. Um, there is some loss of trees. Um, this option is kind of in that medium high loss. Um, there is an easier option to go through um closer to the river. Uh, however, due to impacts to historic resources, we had to to eliminate that option. Um, so there would be some tree loss here. Uh, we did assess the trees um before progressing with design and these are um Aspen Poplar for the most part. So something that will grow regrow quite quickly. Um, and that we can mitigate the loss to loss of um quotes um fairly fairly easily.
Okay, so here's my next question. The the mayor, I see her point. Just so we know, we got got your point here. So um, she's claiming that we're stating that really the public can go in through and back out again and rejoin. So why are we not just? What is your argument for not just continuing with what we're currently doing and not worry about this blue section?
To the chair to council who's sorry, we're staring at each other going, who's going first? Um, the rationale for this is although the trail does exist, um, it is currently um in the Red Willow uh trail system. The intention is for an uninterrupted connected system both to the north and south uh banks of the river. What this does is force two road crossings. Um, so you're actually pulling off of the actual Red Willow Trail System into the neighborhood trail system and back. Uh, so when uh the project charter was proposed and we did the feasibility assessment, um completing this gap, it is noted in our active transportation strategy. Um, it and it would meet our standards both for complete street and Red Willow. Um, so although the trail, there is a trail, it is not um an uninterrupted trail that doesn't require road crossings as the rest of our Red Willow Trail System does. Um, so it's it is connected for sure. Um, it's just not not continuously connected, which is one of the goals of the Red Willow Trail System.
And we're looking at just that four hundred and ten meters is going to cost a million dollars?
Yes, through the chair. Um, this, um, as you can see, um, there is historic resources in the area. So there's some mitigation that's required uh related to that. Um, and what you can't see from this, the photo that's shown on screen is the uh slope drops off quite dramatically um to the side. Um, so I I often say that the reason there's no trail here now is because this is quite difficult. Um, so it's easier just to leave it as is. So that was the goal of the feasibility study is to look at, is it actually possible? Because for a long time uh folks have been told that it's not or it's not feasible. Um, so we knew coming into this project that this would not be a straightforward uh trail development, and it is quite expensive as we expected. In this segment particularly, what's driving the cost is the need to put in a retaining wall along a a small segment of it, which are which is quite expensive.
Okay, and then the last question I have is uh the mayor's motion, it says like the understanding of it, and it says remove the from the scope of zero four five and likewise remove. So it's not likely. It's like we're just gonna remove it from the tenure capital plan if this were to pass, correct?
Through the chaired council, here's that is correct. We would remove the the phase, this segment to the blue section from the tenure capital plan based on
I said I hadn't done it. I lied. Um, I got one more. When you did your public consultations about this, what was the public feedback of desperately wanting to have this uh four hundred and ten meters paved?
Yeah, I can. I can reflect that, Danielle, if you're happy.
Absolutely.
Um, during our public engagement, um, specific to trail segment two, um, folks did see uh the advantage of that continuous connection. They don't particularly like crossing the street. And in this case, you have to cross it twice if you want to stay. I was sorry. Um, and then so we presented four different options, including a granular trail option due to the the tree stand through closer to the river. Um, along with um one on-road option, which would be very inexpensive, but remove on-street parking. Um, and then the side of the road option, which is what is being shared in the uh project charter and the costing is based on. And overwhelmingly, um, participants rated that they wanted us to build something as opposed to nothing. So we did get that do nothing option. Um, and then looking at all of the factors, um, environmental, historic, um, and um all of those factors, that's how the recommendation to construct um uh roadway adjacent came to be. Um, but generally speaking, folks all overwhelmingly wanted to see this trail built versus nothing at all.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kilic.
Thank you. And I apologize. I just don't remember. Uh, there were several options given for segment two. And one, one of them that was quite inexpensive was putting the trail right up against the road, basically where people currently walk. The kind of current goat trail, if we will.
That's what this is. Yep.
It it. Is there a cheaper solution with or because the new solution is that the trail is on the other side of the trees closer to the river?
No, it's right on the it's right on the road. They're going to the river was expensive.
Okay. Right on the road. Okay, for a million bucks.
Through the chair uh to Counselor Kilic, I think, man, that if you want to clarify where exactly that trail runs, that would be great.
Certainly. So we did explore four options. Uh, the light blue um was the least, in fact, impactful and the least expensive option. Um, there are uh historic resources that do need to be protected along that blue alignment, which we weren't able to find out till later in the process. Um, so that light blue option had to be eliminated just to avoid disturbing those historic resources. The two options, there was one um that would essentially take the um on-street parking, remove that, create a small concrete barricade. Um, and basically it would looks very similar to a bike line in in downtown Edmonton. Um, that was supported over doing nothing. Um, however, the feedback that we got from the neighborhood residents was that that wasn't really preferred by those that lived nearby. Um, so obviously it would reduce parking for their visitors and um narrow traffic down on the roadway. So um, the option that is being presented currently in the twenty for the twenty twenty four budget um has it coming alongside the road here um in this um sorry, B one um cross-section. So B two is the cheapest option. Um, cross-section A unfortunately is not no longer viable. Um, and then B one is what's being brought forward, if that makes sense.
Okay, and and there is a sidewalk on the other side, the
Yes.
red line, right? So they people can walk across. They don't have to actually go through the neighborhood trail to connect. They can actually just go down the sidewalk on the other side of the road.
That is
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Mackay, do you really have a question?
Uh, just clarification, just arising out of one question asked earlier. So but if if administration's interpretation is, is that if this passes then we're just gonna remove it altogether from tenure capital plan. Is there another option that we can just put it on the unfunded portion of the tenure capital plan? Just unfunded and then because maybe future councils will will say, let's go ahead and do this. But if if we take it off completely, is it lost or does it have to start from scratch?
Uh, Counselor Mackay, that, you know, if you want to make that uh amendment, that's fine, but I'm proposing
I mean, just just point of clarification. You don't have that in your motion. It's it's administration's interpretation that it would come off of the tenure capital.
Segment two unfunded.
Well, but that
Through the chaired counselor Mackay, that is our understanding of the intention of the motion. So um, I guess we would take clarity from council if that's not what was intended through the motion, but that's how we interpreted it. So that's what we were affirming through.
Sorry, your intention. But you interpreted what I meant correctly. But if you want to bring it back on a a later later date, that's your prerogative, I guess.
Well, yeah, if if you're not gonna do a friendly to say, keep it on the keep it on the unfunded capital plan. Then
Separate motion. I honestly don't think within the next ten years we need to do this, so.
You're gonna be on a yacht. Okay, all right. I just want clarification. I don't want to lose it. I don't
Any more questions over here? We're good? Counselor Jolly, you're good? Okay. Can I go? Uh, I'm not gonna talk too much about this one. Banda and uh all of the rec department have known my intention on this for the longest time. Um. Again, I'll go back to what I said earlier. The priority for Oakmont Trail Phase uh two was this unpassable section between the bridge and uh Botanica. Totally appreciate that staff extended it all the way through the blue and the orange section to try to connect everything. And if again, if we had all the money in the world, I would I would do this. Actually, if I had all the money in the world, I would take that trail out towards the river, which was the expensive option. It would have been beautiful. Um, but to build a trail for a million dollars parallel to a sidewalk um is not honestly good use of taxpayers' dollars right now. And I'm just gonna end it there. Sorry. Especially when you have options. You can go through the neighborhood or on the sidewalk with your stroller, wheelchair, everything you want, anything you need. So anything else in debate? Counselor Hughes?
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards agreeing with you at this moment. Because we also have to realize that we've already downgraded segment one substantially from a trail. And so there's a potential it will just stay as a road and then it's not even a trail. So we're not the intention was to make it paved all the way through, but we've already made a claim clear that we're not going to do that. So this may just be an area that will not be connected by trail about Sashville. And that's just the way it works. And I understand your arguments for it. So we can always have a change to have it at the capital budget when we have that capital budget discussion later on, like next year. If we want to just have it put there just again as a placeholder. That's it.
Counselor Jolly?
Thank you. So I was planning on opposing this motion, so I just want to make clear why I'm supporting it. Um, when I, when I bike this section, um, I just hop onto the road and keep going until it hooks kind of back up. Um, and also I'm comfortable that anyone walking the trail would kind of do the same thing. They'd cross the road and keep going on the sidewalk um or walk on the road, which is legal on that side of the road, depending on what direction you're going. Um, so so I'm comfortable supporting this motion. I don't think anyone was is going into the neighborhood trails who are doing that loop, but maybe they are. So um, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Really? Go.
That's me. Um, I think I just want to give administration notice that I will be bringing it back for the as an unfunded, perhaps for the
That's me. Um, I think, I just want to give administration notice that I will be bringing it back for the, as an unfunded, perhaps for the in the uh tenure capital plan. I don't want to lose this. Okay, so I just want to make sure administration is aware.
Perfect. I have nothing to close. Call for the vote. Then he's closed, and that passes unanimously. And before we leave Oakmont, um, Counselor Jolly, you'd kind of given an indication that you might want to do a injection to the budget for some garbage cans and benches. Did you want to bring that forward?
Yeah, I just have a quick question first, um.
Why don't you read it, so any watching online knows what you're planning on doing?
Yeah, so that up to fifteen thousand dollars from the capital budget is approved to install benches per engineering standards for trails and signage for Oakmont Trail Segment One Old Bed of Rose Drive when the Northeast Servicing Project is complete.
Okay, perfect. Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, so I've kind of two questions. So one, how are the garbage cans in Riverlot fifty-six serviced? Um, and what is the cost? What would be the cost to do something similar for this one segment?
I think you and I'll ask Jay Mason uh to speak to um the operational impact of those uh facilities.
Yeah, we just, we just assume those in the annexation, so. Curious.
Yeah, I'll have to bring uh Louise Stewart on for that one. I know previously to annexation, we just took care of the one that was in the parking lot, but uh I'll ask Louise to uh provide some context since our station.
Yeah, so since annexation, um, we do take on, there's also uh uh, and Amanda would know better than I, the, the group that maintains it, uh, that also provides some assistance, but the red tube that's out in the parking lot was a donation sort of from us to Sturgeon at the time. Uh, it was a tube that had actually failed on our end, it had collapsed, and so it was uh of no use. And because we were aware, there was a significant number of St. Albert residents using Riverlot fifty-six. We put the, the tube in for them and we serviced them. And so that has to be serviced with a specialized truck that can actually lift that size of bag, the weight of that out. Um, but any other internal cans would be done um by simply just a garbage truck that's going there weekly. Um, rough cost is about two hundred and fifty dollars per can per year, um, and that includes weekly servicing. Um, and a bench roughly to put in, it, we, we charge about fifty dollars annually, and that's to life cycle it out over twenty-five years.
Okay, so thank you. So I, I guess just to clarify some of my motion, I've um explicitly excluded garbage cans, kind of Counselor Mackay, to your point about, we don't want to damage trails or anything like that with our equipment. Um, but I would like back benches for people who need that break when they're taking a walk.
All right, any questions on this? Okay. I, I don't know if that was part of your debate, Counselor Jolly, or do you have anything further?
No, that was, that was debate. Thanks.
Okay. I see, oh, Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be quick on this. Um, my understanding is each bench is a fifty-five hundred dollars to install it. So we basically, we're going to be agreeing to and the standard is one every four hundred meters, and we're doing eight hundred meters of trail, so it actually would fit in. So, but I'm thinking we're not going to spend the full fifteen, even if this is approved, because when I did this before, a long time ago, they said it's fifty-five hundred a bench. So, there you go.
Counselor Mackay?
And I'll be quick, too. I'm going to oppose this only in the sense that I think this, we, we, we can't be just doing these one-offs and just creating standards on the fly. I, I believe that we have standards for a purpose, and um um, I just think there's a proper process to follow first.
Thanks, Counselor Mackay. Counselor Jolly to close.
Nothing further, thanks.
Call for the vote. Run is closed. Oh, that motion fails with Counselor Mayor Heron, sorry. Uh, Counselor Broadhead and Counselor Jolly in favor. Interesting. Okay. Um, let's move on to, okay, Counselor Kilic, we are on to postpone motion forty, which is the municipal area network expansion.
Yep, I'll read it in.
Read it in, yep.
The project I T V S dash zero zero nine municipal area network expansion, the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand be funded for twenty twenty-three from the capital budget.
Awesome. Any questions on this one, counsel? Counselor Mackay, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I just need to ask in relation to, I mean, the backgrounder was very thorough, and I appreciate it. Now, I I'm allowed to talk about the backgrounder, it was, it came across as confidential. It's confidential. Okay, well then, I can't ask my question.
Well, we can go camera.
I don't.
Is it going to make it, break your vote?
No, I was just asking about some of the ensuring that some that the priorities to me seem to be a little, or the objectives seem to be good, and then the objective three kind of threw me for a loop. So, and anyway, so I um no pun intended. But anyways, I um, um, I, I'm, I'm fine. I don't, I don't think we need to go on camera for that.
Okay. Counselor Hughes.
Yeah, I still have a question. So I understand that's confidential, so I'm going to work around this best I can. I'm trying to figure out if there's actually any ramifications if we delayed this, like, it's on the, it's on the tenure capital, and that just because it isn't this year doesn't mean it won't be funded for next year, and there's obviously a reason why you thought it wasn't an impetus now. So is there really any issue if we didn't fund it this year and worried about it in a future year?
I'll start, and then I'll, I'll turn over to Joanne Graham, who could speak specifically. Um, again, I, I guess as a general comment, the unfunded things are still important, obviously. It's relative to the, the entire list. Joanne?
Certainly. So uh through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, so the, what I can speak about, because it is in the public charter and therefore not considered in the confidential um content of the backgrounder, is that uh the, a part of the intent of this project is to create what we call redundant rings to connect our facilities. Uh, the longer that we do not have those redundant rings, the longer we live with the risk that we could lose connectivity to our facilities. And when I say lose connectivity, it means that some facilities would not have any internet or any connection to the city network.
Okay, so it, I realize the longer you go, the, the worse, I mean, you're obviously, it's a risk management thing. Is there, we'll need to do this right now? Is there any real benefit beyond just the risk element? Is there any other benefit to doing it now versus later? Because it, it was still unfunded, right? And we still had money sitting in the capital budget at the time, so I'm trying to figure out if there's an urgency.
A- as I mentioned, the primary impetus is that risk mitigation. So the longer you live with the risk, uh, you know, you can do the mathematics on it, but the higher the probability that at some point that risk may be realized.
How confident are we about the number three hundred and eighty thousand?
So the uh, the number three hundred and eighty thousand was based on the initial capital project number of actually two hundred thousand, which we then uh increased by the factor of uh um, construction costs that we've experienced this year. The intent has always been that we would build as much as we can within the dollars allotted within the capital budget. So there is an option to approve a lower amount. It would simply curtail the actual amount of fiber that we could put in the ground. So we would build until we ran out of money for this year. We would continue to build next year until we ran out of money. And that's the approach that we've been taking since twenty nineteen.
So if we were just looking at a next year's approach, could you actually spend the full three hundred and eighty next year, or could, would really, the budget of what you could spend would be like a hundred and fifty thousand, and the rest would be kind of carried forward?
So based on, based on what we are seeing in the tenders that we have put forward, we will be able to spend realistically three hundred and eighty thousand if that was approved.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
I just wanted to add one point, just for clarification, that there was, with the capital charter, there is an operating impact, and we just, that was missed in the financial implication in motion, so we just wanted to highlight that.
What is the operating impact?
It's a hundred thousand.
Annually?
I'll pass that on to Joanne. I believe it's temporary, but I'll just get clarification.
Thank you. Through, through the Chair to Counselor Hughes. So the, uh, the operating impact is actually for an IT network analyst. We have had a history, the city of St. Albert, for good or for, for, or not, of putting in infrastructure, but not providing the staffing in order to maintain and manage of it. So the IT, uh, the IT network analyst is the operating impacts of capital. The real critical point at which that position is needed is when we actually add more utilities, facilities to the network. Because at that point, we simply add more network hardware that needs to be managed, and that would take us beyond the capacity of what we have now. If we were to focus this uh capital budget to creating those redundant rings, that's that resiliency that connects our facilities. We would not need to have that operating impact of capital immediately in year one.
So you're going to bring forward uh pro, uh, business case for, and for this F T E when it does get triggered, I guess?
Correct.
And you're assuming that this is not going to be enough to make a trigger? Is that also correct?
It, yes, if we, if we in twenty twenty-three focus on the redundant rings, that the, that resiliency between the facilities, that would not trigger it. The implementing connections to other facilities and the network infrastructure that goes along with that, that would be the trigger.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. Seeing none, uh, Counselor Kilic, go ahead with some arguments.
Uh, yeah, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward from my perspective, in that um the need for this, in my mind, is, is really summed up in that the services and, and risks um are, we can't even talk about them. They're, they're so sensitive to running our business uh that they have to be kept confidential. I, I can't imagine a project that we would, whatever, have that kind of uh uh, impact. And, and yet, we're, uh, we're looking at it and saying, well, boy, is it, is it really required? And, and like I said, it, it, it must be so required because the, the impacts of it are, are kept confidential. Um, it, it, this, this is, and again, we can't even um, it's protected under FOIP, where we, we couldn't even release the information under the FOIP requirement. So um, I, I think this is an absolute critical thing that we keep moving forward with. Uh, generally, fiber networks, as we know, provide safe, secure, robust and redundant networks that are critical for all of our services that run the city. Whether, you know, at a high level, it's like our adaptive traffic signals, emergency communications, city operations, tax department, financial management, uh, you know, capital tracking, employees putting information into databases and centralizing it backup in, backup of our email servers, you know, getting the information back and forth between where, where our data centers are. All of those things say to me that this, this funding should continue for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, and we get the project done. It's something the team has been working on since twenty nineteen. And building this network, to me, is, is an insurance policy to ensure uninterrupted operations of the city across everything. We're moving more and more data around the city every day. New applications, permitting applications, uh, you know, electrical permits, you, you need building permits, business permits, you name it. To me, this is just something that should be done in stages, manageable, as Joanne has broken down, two years. And ultimately, it provides that those services and security of their operation for residents and everything the city does. And I, I would strongly support um, moving ahead and continuing to move ahead. It's not like we're moving ahead, we're continuing to build out this security and robust network that we need.
Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I only need to save Rogers, and people will understand what will happen if the system goes down. And uh, we provided service to our community, and uh, and it's by and large, even more so day by day, uh, uh, internet and uh, dependent. So this is got my vote, Counselor, like, Kelly.
Counselor Hughes. And I was kind of in the fence in this for a bit, and then I actually went to the N A T A networking uh, certain network administrator thing yesterday, and the need for redundancy is not optional. So what we are doing with that risk is that if something goes down, we are going to be in an emergency status that will be very difficult to repair in a timely fashion. So to prevent an emergency, um, because the city communications and how everything is going relies on the internet and relies on that communication. We did not work in nineteen seventies any longer. And we have to expect that. I don't want to put us into jeopardizing it where we had created a situation which could have been preventable. Because we just didn't want to spend the money out of the capital budget. It's not going to affect the taxes again as far as the tax rate goes this year or future years, but it could cause a serious problem if this, if we did not have the redundancy we require. So I'll support it.
Anyone else? I'll just explain why I'm not going to vote for it. Um, because honestly, I, I was pushing the municipal network for a long time, trying to get the I T S system going. Um, my only, my only thoughts in this is we have limited capital, and if it didn't get through the, the prioritization, I just, it's hard for me to support. Uh, if I had a million dollars, I'd do it all, and this would be one of the top ones, but right now, not. Anything to close?
Uh, I think Counselor Broadhead said it best, you know, that this is something uh, you, you only know that you absolutely need it when you don't have it. And when this, when and if a network goes down, uh, all hell breaks loose, and that's what this network build will, will help uh prevent. And uh, doing it in stages, breaking it down, um, is, is the right approach. Thank you.
Call for the vote. voting's closed. My motion passes, passes with Counselor Vanski and myself opposed. P M zero five one, which is Counselor Kilic's motion on Villanova rebuild. Yeah, you put, did you want, well, I'll just, well, let's get him to read it in.
That the project engineering zero seventy-five villain of road, road rebuild be deferred to twenty twenty-four and amended to include only phase one B construction and phase two detailed design in twenty twenty-four in the amount of six point zero seven million, and that phase two construction project and boring dialogue approval be deferred for consideration as part of the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay, uh, questions, Counselor Mackay?
Yeah, to administration. I imagine Dean's on the line there. Um, so, um, your backgrounder in relation to the postponed motion, it's just phase one A was tendered and awarded. Phase one B tendered at the same time, but subject to twenty twenty-three budget approval, so, so right now. So, um, all right. And then, like, can you tell me what the impacts of that would be if this motion passes? I like your background.
Thank you, uh, through you, uh, Chair, to Counselor Mackay. Um, essentially, what would happen is the results of the motion, um, if passed, would mean that we would need to communicate to the contractor to say that the phase one B uh, would not be progressing in twenty twenty-three. And we would come back for budget consideration in future budgets, twenty twenty-four, I believe, is, is recommended in the, in the motion. Uh, and subject to that budget approval, we would have to re-tender. So the value that we have right now identified in the charter and the funding request uh, would essentially need to be revamped. Um, we would, we would update the charter with uh necessary updates uh to the project estimates. Um, you're using new trends and values, and then, subject to the actual tendering, um, we would find the results.
Based on what you're finding, I'll
Based on what you're finding out right now, based on those trends, it's probably more money than not less money, right?
I may ask Tim, I mean, at this point in time, it's, it's, it's a little bit, I think there is some unknowns. I would say that we aren't anticipating substantial decrease. And Tim, please correct me or jump in if, if there's anything on the capital project side to share, but on the roadwork side, we're not anticipating reductions, substantial reductions in, in construction costs.
Yeah, Dean, you, you said it to the, while oil prices have reduced, you know, the forecasting is, is that the, the cost increases are going to be attributed to labor shortages. We're already seeing some of that now with the availability of crews and the availability of resources to, to perform the work. So we can't say with a high level of certainty what the trends are going to be come 2024. However, there isn't anything stating that costs are going to drastically reduce. If anything, I, I would err on the side of caution that there is going to be an increase. But that is again, just opinion.
And I mean, the, the priority for Phase 1B at least is just around sort of the, that whole active mode accommodation, just to provide more safety in relation, because right now Vilnav Road would remain more of a rural two lane. And the idea would be that this would add a little bit more safety. Is that kind of the idea around dealing with that? I mean, that's what the backgrounder identifies, but I just want to.
Excuse me, that's absolutely correct. So in terms of the overall improvements, there isn't any additional lanes. There's really no further intersection improvements because we were connecting to the access improvements on the east portion of the commercial site, Walmart type to the already completed in 2020, but subject to completion in 2023, but the approved work at the Dennison Jensen Gate intersection. So this is a linear corridor improvement. No additional lanes and the benefit is largely addressing that accommodation for active modes with the trail on the north side. Along the segment, we are seeing increased use to which unfortunately there is no accommodation for active modes. And so it's the use of the roadway, which is narrow, narrow roadway and whatnot. And unfortunately, to deliver the actual active, the trail, the active mode accommodation, the roadway needs to be urbanized on, on the north side and whatnot. So there's in, in any opportunity to reduce the scope solely to deliver that trail, unfortunately, that doesn't exist. Otherwise, we'd be recommending that as an option as well to meet the delivery of the priorities to accommodate active modes at a lower cost.
Thanks. How much of one, like is, can you split out one Phase 1A and 1B from, how much is leavable? Like, is it? I think the original backgrounder identified 35% of leavable, but that was for total 1A, 1B. Can you provide more clarity on what would be leavable?
I believe because active modes and the drainage improvements and whatnot and the landscaping are leavable, it, it aligns to that 35, 65 split as well. So the, the vast majority, I don't have the exact percentage, but it is a higher percentage that is leavable compared to not.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Kilik.
Thank you. Through, through the mayor, Dean, they might, my understanding.
Counselor Kilik, we're in committee. You don't have to do all the, okay, yes, be casual.
Hey, Dean, good to see you. Thanks for coming. The, my understanding is the traffic circle at Hogan Road and Vilnav will be built by the developer in this coming building's construction season. Is that right?
That's what's anticipated. Now, as with, I just maybe this is an opportunity to share with you some potential impacts is of course with the existing conditions of the bridge north on the rain road 255. You know, accommodation to residents in that area may be a consideration and any delay or impact is with the delivery of that intersection, Hogan and Vilnav, there'd be a closure required. And so we don't want to landlock anybody or lose access or whatnot. So at, at right now, we're going to have to go over the details, scheduling the capital projects, impacts stakeholders, and ultimately come to a conclusion on the best delivery to address the network needs. But it was anticipated that the intersection improvement of Holden and Villanue would be delivered by the developer in 2023.
And, and would that entail then disruption of traffic along Vilnav? Like you're going to have just like when we built Dennis and then you know, we shut it down for four months or five months during construction. So.
Yeah. So absolutely, there will be a traffic impact. Detours will be required. In construction of the roundabout, the likelihood is high in terms of full closure. The delivery of Dennis and ability as allows for connectivity through detour of local traffic through to Deer Ridge to Dennison and into Jensen Lakes as well as to the west lake for there's a couple of commercial sites, resident sites on building between Dennison and Holden Road. So access can be maintained to those sites. But ultimately, network large loads, as an example, would be deterring similar as to what they did in 2023, connecting via Ray Given and Giroux to San Edward Trail Highway 10.
Yeah. So, so we would still have detours, but the, the traffic that's going down Vilnav, I've already seen it significantly decreased because people coming out of Aaron Ridge, they now go through Jensen Lakes to the new traffic circle and over to Ray Given and they, it avoids all that, you know, traffic coming down St. Albert Trail and into to, to the Walmart area and then along Vilnav. So I've, I've noticed the decrease in traffic. Is, is there any other? Like, it, it seems to me the driver of rebuilding that section of Vilnav is, has the traffic volume has decreased. Would, would that be fair?
I, I don't have the numbers to suggest that the vehicle volumes have reduced. We'll, we'll get that as we get into 2023 with our network data collection. And see now that it's open, it just opened in October. So it's a little early to say for all impacts on vehicle. But I reiterate to say that the improvements on Vilanu for 1B are largely pedestrian related. So we're not adding travel lanes that would suggest that any construction would not be the, the construction of improvements would not be related to vehicle demand.
So largest driver is that we're going to get a sidewalk for $5 million, obviously with a bunch of other road improvements. But that's essentially what we're, the, the rest of the work will be finished under the current existing budgets, the, the Dennison traffic circle lights and whatever else is missing there. Essentially, those pieces will be finished within their existing budget scope.
That, that's correct. Yeah. So the improvements with St. Albert Trail and Vilanu to the commercial site, those are completed, landscaping is remaining, but to be completed under the existing budgets. The intersection of Dennison and Villanue would be completed under the existing budgets. And just for clarity, the street lighting around the roundabout and intersection would be addressed through that, but there'd be no additional street lighting along that side. So, but absolutely correct for the intersection improvements would be completed through existing funding.
Yeah. So. Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Does Counselor Jolly's good? Okay, see no more questions, Counselor K. So, excuse me, this is your motion. I'll let you go into opening arguments.
Yeah, just, thank you. It, it just seems to me that we could defer this. I, I understand it does not have implications to tax dollars in year. But when we borrow the money, we have to pay it back and we start paying it back next year after we, we borrowed it to, to do this capital project. It, it just seems again that in a time when we're trying to save money and, and look at what our priority projects are for capital, this would be something that we could defer. And I'm not saying we don't ever do it. I'm just saying we defer it for one year. The road works well. It, it's not like Vilnav is in bad shape or full of potholes or anything like that. And to me, at this stage, the biggest driver to get a sidewalk along a route where there's very little pedestrian traffic, I don't, you know, walking into Walmart and then you buy something and you're going to carry 20 pounds of groceries home, probably not likely. I, I do see bike riders, but they are certainly, they're, they're the St. Albert Bicycle Racing Club. And they, they will not go on the, on the sidewalk. In any case, they will stay on the road. So I'm, I'm just not sure what we actually improve by, by funding this project this year. And it could be deferred. And the second point of my motion really is to break this into two pieces so that we have clear phased construction with the funding allocation assigned specifically for each phase. And that again, the, the borrowing by law, yes, I understand we, it could face new interest rate changes. But it, it allows us to have transparency between the two projects and, or two parts of the project. So that, that was the other part of, of the motion of, of making it into a, you know, funding for Phase 1B, which is construction and then the planning for the, the other part of the road. So we're, we're not slowing things down in that regard. And Phase 2 construction, which would be west of, of Hogan Road. The borrowing bylaw would be a separate item and, and the project would be separate and we would have a better sense of the funding at that time. So tho- those are the, the main key points of, of what I've proposed here today.
Counselor Mackay?
Thank you. I was almost going to say Madam Mayor, but I didn't want to be.
Keep it cash.
I, I'm going to oppose this, and I think it came from my line of questioning. If you look at some of the background or information, Phase 1B, the corridor improvements from Walmart Commercial Access to the Roundabout at Dennison Drive have been detailed designed and tendered with the award, and it's basically around the, the safety question that I was talking about. And it just brings it up, not only the fact that you can actually have a sidewalk. And yes, it might not be heavily used right now, but again, you build it, they will come, the bikes maybe will be on there. Plus, we're adding two new expanded developments in that area, both Novo or Nuvo and the Jensen Lakes will be expanded out there. So that's going to increase not only vehicle traffic perhaps, but it'll also increase pedestrian traffic. So I, I honestly, I, I mean, and you in the opening argument, Counselor Kilik identified some of my other concerns and the fact that now we're instead of having one overall bylaw, boring bylaw, we're going to have basically two. And now that adds a little additional, not only cost potentially, potentially it adds additional complexities that aren't included right now in the, in the project. So I mean, I just didn't, I mean, administration, we've been working on it. We realize that we're, we've that this is an important crosstown for our community. And as Mr. Kilik has identified, or not Mr. Kilik, Mr. Schick, I apologize, Mike, has identified. I mean, there may be already in plans where administration is forced to look at Phase 2 a little differently because of developer. You know, because of the situation we find with the bridge. So I mean, those may look after themselves anyways. But I, I really believe that this connection, so I mean, deals with the utilities, it deals with landscape, it deals with some of the overall improvements that I just think are, I mean, you, you're right, we save a little bit of money, but I just don't know what the cost when compared to potentially conflict between a vehicle and a, and a pedestrian or a bicyclist. So I, I, those are my concerns right now, and I'll be opposed to stopping this at this particular time.
Thank you, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly appreciate the heart behind the, the motion. I have to admit though, I'm not a real fan of, of just delaying capital projects that have been on the plan and funded by administration. It just delays the inevitable in terms of the process that we have to do to build it. So to my point, I would just suggest we continue with the plan as is established and, and carry on because 2025 will have or 2024 will have challenges of its own. So I, I think that the, the process in this particular project was identified as something to be done next year, and we should just stay the course. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hughes?
Thank you. The two things I'm looking at when I look at this is, is there an urgency to do it today? And I recognize that anything can be done, but I don't see that there's an urgency to do today. And the reason why the urgency is a concern is because interest rates have been climbing. And so in my mind, when you're increasing these interest rates, we don't know what's going to happen in two years, but we do know that right now they're up. And you know, a couple of years ago, the forecast was like, nope, they're never going to go up again. They're going to stay. Well, well, guess what? We're not there anymore. And there's no sign that it's ending right now. So why would there be a reason to wait 12 months? Because there's a chance that if we just delay it 12 months, that the borrowing would actually cost us a lot less than there. So we don't know which way it's going to go. It could go up, it could go down, but we do know that it's up right now, and it probably will be up next year when we go forward. So waiting those extra 12 months and just minimizing the amount in our debt load will make a difference. So that, just for that very reason, I'm willing to consider this. That's it.
Counselor Vromansky?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kilik. I'm going to support your motion. And the reason being is I think that borrowing for something that's not absolutely necessary now, again, as other counselors have mentioned, is a mistake. And what we've run into in the development of roadways in that area is constant overruns in cost. And I think people are exhausted from construction in the area. And maybe giving it a rest for a year would be beneficial as well. And then determine at that point in time if that particular area or the sidewalk is absolutely necessary. So again, I'll support this one. Thank you.
Counselor Jolly?
Thank you. I changed my mind on this. Counselor Mackay convinced me. Ultimately, I want to make sure that our roads are safe. And an investment in complete streets is an investment in, in the safety of our community. So I'll be opposing this motion.
And for me, I just, my experience has been just postponing capital projects and they end costs us more. The prices always go up the next year when they recost it. It's higher and higher and higher. And so that's one reason I hate just delaying to try to save money because in the end it doesn't save money. The other thing I'm concerned about is there will be construction next year, Counselor Vromansky, anyway, because 1B is happening. But complete streets is a priority and I have responded to many emails, the people that are back onto that road asking for the sidewalk and asking for access. Was it Counselor Mackay that said, build it and they will come? Yeah, I think, I think that's actually very true. And because there's been construction this year and there'll be construction next year, like, like, I think we just need to give the, the residents a break and get this done and complete, and then it never has to be touched again. So yeah, I think, I think it's, as I said, just get her done. Anything to close?
Well, I guess my, my view of, of get her done is like, let's take a break. Complete what we've already got on the books because this construction has been going on forever. And I think residents are, are getting fatigued by it. They're already going to be impacted by, you know, Hogan Road, another traffic circle. And that in itself will help. The Nuvo construction actually is not connected to the sidewalk. There, there's a gap. So they're, they're being built in any case. There's already 20 houses, 25 houses up. They're, they're not going to connect to that sidewalk because it doesn't reach to them. This, this is a sidewalk just from Jensen or Dennison up to Walmart. And I, I totally think we should finish the projects, take a break, see what's needed and restart construction of Phase 1B, which is just that short section of Vilnav Road. I honestly believe that you could go back to the contractor and say, hey, I honestly believe that you could go back to the contractor and say, hey, you gave us this contract. Bid on it. Um, they're gonna want the business. They do a lot of business with St. Albert. Uh, they're gonna want the business. They've already done their their cost estimates. And my. Guess would be that you would say to them, sharpen your pencil if you want to get that. Contract re- awarded. Uh, for one year later. And they they would be there. Uh, within the same. Uh, quote, so. This to me is is work that can be. Deferred, and we don't take on that borrowing. And um uh until we absolutely really need to. So. Uh, I hope that that uh. Certainly was the intent of the motion and and I hope it's supported.
Right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Council Vermette, Hughes, and Kilik in favor. Uh, where are we? No supper's here, I forgot. You guys want some supper? Or you guys? Seriously? Well, I was gonna go to six fifteen, so we're either gonna take a ten or fifteen minute supper, or we're gonna go to six fifteen, and then you can have your supper.
Yeah, but I'm going to.
You can take it. I'll make you a plate.
Thanks, Mom.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. What do you want? Break? Wes? Okay. Can we do it fast? Okay, it's. Five. Thirty, so five forty-five? Okay. Oh, is she? Council Jolly?
Yeah, I'm here. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, we can see you. Okay, we are on postponed motion forty-five. Which is Council Prometski's uh motion on the transportation master plan. So I'll get you to read it. Shelley, go ahead.
Thank you. That E N G S zero one zero transportation master plan be postponed to the twenty twenty-four budget and the tax savings of eight hundred thousand is returned to the capital budget.
Okay, and this again does not. Have any tax savings or doesn't, okay. Um, just to be clear, so what, forty-five, right? Okay, uh, any questions on this one, Council? See, Nana, I'm going to go straight to your opening arguments, Council Vermette.
Thank you again. Um, again, in the thank you administration for the backgrounder, uh, but again, it's confirmed in the backgrounder that a delay of one or more years from twenty to twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Is not expected to be overly detrimental. Um, the concern with this um is. The uh hiring of consultants again for another eight hundred thousand dollars uh for a regional transportation plan. Um, at a time when government's evolving right now, we have a new U C P government in the province, and we have an election in the spring, and transportation is a focus of many of the new areas. Uh, we're still working on transit in the trial transportation plan as well. And being that it's been this long since the transportation plan was done, and a delay of one year would not um impact the city. Again, I'm arguing it would be uh more impactful to have a accurate transportation plan next year. Um, savings of a hundred thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-three capital budget plan for greater accuracy in intent in twenty twenty-four makes fiscal sense to me. As an argument.
Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. I realize that this isn't going to change the taxes right now. Um, but what we are doing is extending the cycle between each time that the T M P is being done, which overall will save the taxpayers because it's not draining the capital budget as quickly. So. I'm going to support this because I realize it's just one year. The background is clear that it's not going to be a big deal if it is delayed an extra year, and if. If we change the cycle from every five years to every six years, or. In this case, it's just one more. It it does have an effect in the cumulative impact to the capital budget on a long-term basis, and that is why. I don't want to be doing studies prematurely. And it's been clear that there's not really opposition from administration to delay it. So when I look at, for example, when we had the transit buses, and at one point, uh, Council Broadhead, I'm sure you probably remember be back when you were on there and I wasn't. Cameracross at the time said, let's move the the. Time of replacement from fifteen years to eighteen and then to twenty. And it doesn't change the fact that buses had to be purchased, but by delaying it just that extra time, it decreases the demand and the withdrawal from that from that reserve. So for the same reason of just not doing things. And if we can extend the life of any document a little bit longer, it delays how frequently you have to replace it. I'll support this.
Seeing more comments, I'll call, I'll let you uh. Have closing arguments, Council Vermette.
Okay, um, I don't really have much further to close. Um, thank you, Council Hughes, for your comments as well. And again, I'm just reinforcing that, that um. Saving consulting fees and accuracy and planning is as should be at the utmost important in our capital funding. So I'll go for the vote now. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Council Broadhead and Council Jolly opposed. Uh, we are now, I think, on to. P M forty-six intersection improvements, is that right? So did not show up even when I reprinted the agenda, it wasn't there. Okay, so. Uh, whose was that one? Okay, Counsel Kill, go ahead.
That the intersection improvements be funded for ninety thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three to complete the in-service safety reviews. For Boudreaux and Sir Winston Churchill and Boudreaux and Campbell intersections from municipal growth capital.
All right, any questions on this one?
Uh, well, just as opening comments.
Well, and just wait for questions.
Oh.
Yeah, okay, but actually appears there are no questions. So you're good. Okay.
Okay, uh, the um recommendation from administration uh actually came back with some very good. Uh, I I I'll call it, I guess, amendment to this uh recommendation for additional funding. And it was specifically that um the top priority, they they. Accepted what I had put forward, but they came back with clarification that said the top priority, if we were to fund ninety thousand dollars, approved funding ninety thousand dollars would be to actually prove. Funding for one hundred thousand dollars and that the priority of projects that they would do with that money. Is a longstanding intersection with sightline problems that is coming out of Beaverbrook. The left-hand turn lane uh which you you can't see when you come out of that subdivision. On to Sir Winston Churchill is blocked by the berm. And when they had additionally done their assessment, um, they they had looked at that construction being top priority for twenty twenty-three. And it was going to cost four hundred and twelve thousand dollars because they were going to do a fairly significant rebuild of of that uh intersection. Subsequently, they've done a more detailed design and uh proposed that for a hundred thousand dollars, they can clear away the berm on just the. Uh, south side so that uh uh you will have better. Residents will have better sightlines coming out of Beaverbrook uh turning on to Sir Winston Churchill. And that all makes total sense to me. Uh, it's administration's recommendation that that would be the top priority. And um I I would like to, based on that, to um amend my own motion, I guess, based on. Uh, administration's input to reflect their their recommendation.
Make it a hundred thousand?
Make make it a hundred thousand specifically for the construction of um, sorry, not Churchill, sorry, my mistake, Sturgeon and Beaverbrook.
All right. Did you capture that? Renee? Trail's got it? Okay, Counsel Hughes question?
Yeah.
Or debate, sorry.
I actually, it's it's a question, just if you can just put up with me for a second on this. Um, Dean, you're you're around here somewhere, right? Um. When I read this, I got the impression that if we did this, it would be because it says it will be done at the expense of not funding other future high project projects. So. Is intention that we, everything that was planned for for Boudreaux and Sir Winston Churchill still happening or? Is this, is this gonna happen if something else has been kicked off of the list? I guess is what I'm asking.
Uh, through you, um, hair and um, uh, council viewers know, I mean, what it'll be is there'll be a delay delivering on those, but those are still top priority intersections that we'll be investigating. So Boudreaux and Campbell, Boudreaux and Sir Winston Churchill. Will investigate performing in-service safety reviews and operational reviews. Um, and any opportunity that we can do it in in with uh resources that we currently have, we'll we'll utilize those, but you know, we'll also inform on the next steps. We'll inform for any project improvements and construction costs or design consideration.
If this wasn't brought forward, when would this interception be considered?
Really Sturgeon and Beaverbrook. If it wasn't brought forward, then uh what would happen is we would be identifying that that there's what's occurred is just for background is some temporary improvements have been placed with temporary curve extensions. Um, there still exists the berm and some site considerations uh which would necessitate these next improvements that were identified in the backgrounder. However, we leave those temporary measures up and be coming forward with uh budget requests to address the issues in twenty twenty-four for the next budget considerations.
So it'll be done this year or it'll be done next year is the intention, correct? Like if it passes, it'll be done this year, and if it's not, you'll run it forward next year.
Yeah, we will continue to identify this and uh address it as identified as a priority.
Okay, thank you. That was it. Um. I'm really not sure where to go on this. That's why I was asking additional questions. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. Um, and I certainly didn't want to do it. It was gonna keep the can off something else, but it appears not to be the case. I had one other question and I'm looking at Diane because I'm like, how much, looking at Anne now, and just so everyone knows who I'm staring at. How much do we have left in the capital budget right now? Because what I'm concerned about is how much money we're spending when we had some left, but we're still going through it. Can you just give us one minute?
Sure. But this year, we've taken out the six hundred and eighty thousand for the segment one, and we just took out eight hundred for. Um, the T M P. But that's for this year. We're gonna have to do more, or at least the T M P we'll have to do eventually, so.
Yeah, the T M P is just kicking it down one, right?
Yeah, so we sort of need to.
And we did add three hundred and eighty for the other one.
Yeah, three added three hundred eighty, so. What else did we do?
About's future, let's not this here. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out because we're we've been going through a lot of capital spending up and down. I just don't know where we're at. So starting to Counselor Hughes, um, the latest motions added back nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, the net impact. And we have around four point five million, which we carry forward into future years.
We need it for future years, too.
Yeah, I know. I didn't know we were carrying four point five. Okay, I still don't know where I'm gonna go. Okay, I'll just, and if Ann Bales wants to talk, go ahead, and if Mike, I'm listening. Counsel Jolly, thanks.
Question, oh.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my question, so is the is the project charter the same? So E N G S oh fifty-four is for the intersection of Sturgeon Road and Beaverbrook, or is it a different project charter?
Don't thank you, uh, Dean.
Yeah, so.
Donnie, and then she can direct from there.
Go ahead, Dean. Yeah, you go. I was gonna say it's the same, but it's a one of the projects under many, under the E N G A zero five four.
Okay. Okay, so, so to Counsel Killick, so you've just kind of. Taken off your intended motion and replaced it with that top priority. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, no other questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're on debate, though. So anyone else on debate? Seeing nothing, Counsel Killick, you can close.
Yeah, this is uh, as I said in my opening remarks, this was identified by administration. Thank you. Uh, it was a top priority identified by administration. Thank you. Uh, it certainly, I've heard from residents in that area. For many years, even before I was, well before I was a counselor, that that was a dangerous intersection, so I'm glad to see it as a top priority. And certainly, I've I've personally experienced the difficulty of that sightline. And uh, so this is, it it and and I appreciate significant, the 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 most significant thing is. It's a reduced proposal from four hundred and twelve thousand dollars to a much simpler, more straightforward hundred thousand. Um, and I I think this is one of those projects where we've we've got the room in our capital to accommodate it and now we can get it done in twenty twenty-three. And the residents of the Beaverbrook area neighborhood will be uh well-served by it, so. Hope it's supported.
All right, call for the vote. I have no idea who's voting on this one. That motion passes. Uh, with just me opposed, okay. Because I had no idea what I was doing there. That was a hard one. Um. We are now on to P M fifty, which is project charter Eng zero seven North San Albert Trail improvements, Counsel Hughes's motion. Go ahead and read it.
Just wanna make sure there's no alternate motion in here, right? You guys are just commenting on the other one, just to make sure. I don't see an alternate motion recommendation. So the project charter in zero seven zero North San Albert Trail improvements, phase three is rephased to phase three A and B. And we revised project charters brought forward to council for Q two twenty-three that reflects the impacts and updated cost estimates with minimal asphalt replacement with consideration using. An I D P process to complete the construction if appropriate. And I have a couple of questions.
Yes, okay, so before we go into debate, I'll let you ask some questions.
Yeah, I'll try to get the order right this time. So. When I looked at this and the one of the backgrounder says that we have minimal. There you are, Dean. We have minimal disruption of asphalt was the intention, but we basically tore up all three lanes of San Albert Trail getting there. So my intention with this motion was to not do that if it was possible. It with the current phase three, is the intention to rip all all three lanes both ways again?
Um, I think there was some R M R related to the existing asphalt structure, and I I think maybe what it was is the initial scope of uh some of the phasing had identified complete reconstruction of the roadway. So whereas it was reduced after condition assessments to a simple mill and overlay, if you will. Um, where viable and possible, we'll absolutely not touch any infrastructure that we may not have to. Um, one consideration, of course, always based on the condition, um, whether or not the life expectancy out of it. So you know, if we see a very short duration where we anticipate some um deterioration in the short term. Uh, then addressing it is probably optimal at that time, not only for the cost savings in regards to kind of uh. The benefit of uh the contractor providing services and at the cost rate then and there, but then the disruption impacts as well. But where it's not viable um and necessary, then we won't touch the infrastructure.
So again, in phase three, then are we ripping up any current roads in your assessment of the twenty-five million? Or are we just adding a lane? All right, and are we actually moving the roads over? Are we just adding a lane? Are we, because we we completely realigned this road. So now are we getting back onto the same track or are we realigning?
Uh, the self-bound lanes are likely to face some realignment. Northbound should be be held as they are. Subject to the only addition considerations would be at the intersection itself in phase three. It's the intersection of uh San Albert Trail and Fowler, future Fowler, uh, existing Neil Ross, uh, for any consideration of additional turning lanes. Um. But again, it would, it could be um with a proposed motion, um, looking at the intent and phasing of the program. Um, to minimize the short-term improvements. Um, to reflect only the necessary improvements to not impact maybe the disruption um with potential fire hall services on the west side of the road. Um, and uh, again, deliver the necessary improvements for uh kind of maximizing our investment to minimize the disruptions specific to the fire services uh considerations. Um, and then revisiting the timing and phasing of the next next improvement.
So when my understanding is that when this came forward for phase three. It was brought forward believing that the fire hub was gonna be brought forward sooner than later, sooner than twenty twenty-five. Um, and so that's why the entire phase was brought forward, but that the entire phase does not need to be done right now. And that we do have some time before, we have at least two years before the firehouse coming in, so. Read the intention of this motion, because what I guess I'm asking is. Is there an actual urgency to do the entire phase, the entire phase three, and is it still workable or not urgent if we were to do it in the phase three and phase B and separate it out? Do, I don't know if I've made myself clear, maybe you can, I'm just, it's a long one already.
Um, yeah, I I believe, I believe the question is clear to say, and the short, the short answer is quite honestly, is that. Um, the corridor and the intersections, um, unlike the first two phases of the North San Robert Trail, they're not reaching levels of capacity issue. Substantial congestion or delay as were other segments, and so the critical nature of the improvements. I I do not believe are there for the North San Robert Trail phase three. Um, the alignment with the improvements, um. Of the short duration or short timeframe would be aligned to servicing uh the fire hall, the proposed fire hall. Which is in the northwest corner of the intersection of future Fowler Lane and San Robert Trail. And to try and try and ensure that we minimize potentials, assuming that that fire hall uh is put into operation in the next year or two. Um, that to minimize with construction activity, A, you have to service the site, uh, so a portion of the roadway is gonna have to be built in to service it. And then uh considerations for, you know, acknowledging that any construction at the intersection, any construction in the self-bound lanes or or area. Um, could impact uh the accessibility for the emergency services, and that's what we focus on. To minimize those ensuring their service, but not facing substantial delay or issue uh in the future.
So if I hear you correct, that's why I have it in two phases. So phase three A is like, we really would like to get done, so we don't interfere with the fire hall. Phase three B is just added because we're just doing a phase, but it's not imperative that it's completed immediately because we don't have the demand really substantiated. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's correct. The three B triggers would be pushed by actual higher, like the volumes and again congestion, uh, potential delay, new development. That would be the triggers for three B.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Killick.
Uh, thank you. So following on Counsel Hughes's comments, uh, phase three A. Being the intersection to service the fire hall. What what is the date for the fire hall? I I keep hearing twenty-four, twenty-five, I'm not. What what date do we really think it's going to be constructed? And Dean, you may not be the person.
Yeah, no, I think.
I'll ask Donnie if she's got any chance to comment. I think Everett is online as well, so maybe I'll go Everett then, Donnie.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, thank you, Bill, uh, through the, through the, uh, through the chair of Counsel Killick. Uh, currently, right now, or on December sixth, we'll be returning to council with a recommendation that came forward to the committee of the whole on November fifteenth. For the type of construction. If that uh, if that, if council accepts a recommendation that's being brought forward. We'll be looking at a construction period for the structure uh requested that would see construction begin in twenty twenty-four with. Uh, installation or the setup of that station in late twenty twenty-four, but more likely by by the end of Q Q two twenty twenty-five. Much of that setup is reliant or probably uh um dependent on the services being provided to that lot as it is currently unserviced. Donnie?
Yeah. Through the chair to Counsel Killick, yes, um, in terms of structure, um, Everett has already spoke to. Uh, with the approval only win, then we can proceed with the sanitary and storm servicing that we need to bring across and Albert Trail. Uh, to service the fire hall. That will likely happen right after the design is completed. Towards the end of twenty twenty-three, maybe Q um, Q four, it'll be ready for construction, tendering, and then twenty-four construction is what is anticipated now.
Okay, um, and then maybe back to Dean, the uh plan to build the road, again, the the intersection essentially is Fowler Way. Intersection which will. Has to be built to service the fire hall because there's there's, I don't even think there's a road there anymore, might might be just a residential driveway. Is is that correct that there's nothing there? We need to build it and we will build it to Fowler Way. Intersection and and I don't know, hundred and fifty meters of of our way.
Stand. Yes, the that's correct, Counsel Killick. There is, so there is an existing service uh road that services the two adjoining um. Previously residential lots that the city acquired um in twenty twenty-one early, yeah, twenty twenty-one, sorry. Um, however, that won't really be what's servicing the fire hall site. And so we'll need to construct a portion of uh. And so we'll need to construct a portion of the first two lanes on east of Fowler Way to provide service to this fire hall, so the emergency side.
So so by taking this approach, I. Get throwing away some costs or anything, it'll it'll be built. As though it was just the first little piece of Fowler Way. Because the other side of the intersection at Costco and whatever those other shops are, that's already dual lane, two left. Turn lane, right? It's all that side's ready to go pretty much.
That's correct.
Okay. And and again, just make sure. There's no traffic, volume, safety. Requirements to do the rest until a few years down the road, maybe. And and. I think Counselor Mackay had indicated that there's a wide shoulder there and when fire trucks honk their horn, cars can get out of the way. So. Again, building, leaving that road. As is St. Albert Trail, two lanes. It's not going to impede us meeting our. Our fire response time standards.
The only I would say there is a potential influence of when the road work does happen for the southbound lanes as an example where. As an example, on phase two, where we are right now doing utility work and whatnot, it requires a lane closure. So you have two lanes. And the construction to deliver ultimately the improvements may require the closure of lane. So you're down to a single lane. Of that existing two lane road until you widen to three lanes. So. The potential to essentially address the additional lane would would. Help alleviate that for the southbound lanes. As a potential priority in kind of looking in. Now, probably there would be some discussion need to be to address the wholehearted nature of this motion. Some discussion with fire services to identify what maybe some of the routing would be and considerations of impacts. A little bit unfair for me to be making maybe some assumptions, but we'd want to clarify that and. Look to say, okay, well, for the delivery of the construction for the intent and look at the scope. And anticipated actions required to deliver on the improvements and what influence of disruption and potential delay could occur.
Yeah, okay, and in the background, I just want to make sure I read it said phase three total is already. In design or or design work is completed. Excuse me, I'm sorry, the design work is completed. So splitting it into. Phase three A for the Fowler Way to service the fire hall. Would be. A huge amount of work, little amount of work, fairly straightforward to to split it. And and I asked that question is. In terms of coming back to council in Q two with with this phase three A, three B. Scenario is you believe that's achievable to to do that?
I I believe that's achievable based largely on the fact that we do have the design. So we're we're not. In anticipating to add scope to that will require further. We're at a level of about ninety percent right now for the for the design. And so there you still need to get it to that neck, no matter what stage. We need to get it to a tender ready design, but we're very close. And so now it would be a take. Takeaway of just looking at the design and seeing again what's the influence to follow way to service the fire hall. Anticipating the scope of construction and then trying to minimize that and separate the the design into two phases, three A, three B. So I believe it's achievable, yes, within Q two for twenty twenty three.
Great, thank you.
Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, ma'am. I I confess I'm somewhat confused. That this project actually made the the ranking. If if this is so doable in two phases, why wasn't it presented at two phases? I mean, it's frustrating me that you go through this priority matrix and and review process. And then when somebody proposes a change, oh, yeah, I know, we could have done that. It's okay. Well, if it was okay, then why was it not presented differently?
Counselor, I guess what I would say is the optimal solution is still doing it all at once and getting it over with. In terms of the sequencing to spread out. Presumably the 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 cost and ensure that we've got the the cost split out over a number of years and and perhaps mitigate some of the impacted people. That's why it can be done. But the the best project approach on this is with a full design is to do it all together and get it over with.
Okay, well, that's what I expected to hear. Thank you.
Counsel McKay.
Thanks, I'll be quick. I've got another meeting in two minutes. So does Renee. The. What's left in phase two? What's left? Because there's a big pile of dirt between the north and southbound, just north of Everett.
Through the mayor here, it comes for you. Right now, there's a utility being put into.
Hold on for a second, Dean. We we've got limited time, Ken, and you're asking about phase two, which is not on the table.
It's gonna it's gonna feed into whether or not this continues though, because it builds on phase three, right?
Yeah, it fills on phase three, but phase two is already funded and and under construction, right? So. I'm just trying to keep this. On, yeah.
So then.
These are good questions for your information, but it's not going to make a decision.
Then the then the question was going to follow and thanks, Mr. Dean.
Mr. Dean.
He's just called him Mr. Dean. Yeah, there we go.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I understand. I know you. But but the point I'm trying to make here, so in relation to the motion, then maybe this is directed because it's something that's in the background or the last kind of portion of it. Consideration of using the IDP process. I mean. I mean, is that still required? I mean, it's already designed and it's already thing. So I mean, I'm just saying, is that necessary in the motion?
It's not necessary, but I still would like it to have it there brought forward. It's not not making them do it. It's just about saying. And you can say, well, where where could we save money? IDP is where you work with the construction people to work on the file design and. And quite frankly, I can see we can save money. We have the islands that are like two to three times the size that where they started at before. There's certainly ways that could be. If the construction company was also motivated to save money. There would be ways that there could be possible ways to save money. So that's why I'm putting that in there because I I think that there's ways that we could have done this for less. And if it's possible, we can do phase three for less. I'd like to have that brought forward. That's why I have it in there, but I'm not. They said they don't want to do it. But I'll tell you right now, those islands are big and we got more than what we need. And it's a lot of money for cement and the stamp concrete's double the price of regular concrete. And all this added to the price. So. That's why I put this forward is I'd like to see some kind of initiatives on cost savings. And if it takes. Visibility for the construction company to move forward and see that we can find some cost savings, I would love to have that happen. But I I realized I said they don't want to, but I still would like to have it in there if it is possible. That's why we have to do. Okay. That's all good. I appreciate that. Can you put the motion on the table? I see no more questions. You've already read it in. I've accepted it. Let's do this. Okay, so. I understand that the initial intention of saying that they can do it all at once is possible. But I also just don't want to be doing a bunch of roadwork when it's really not in a demand. We are not going to need that phase three tripled that far up for quite some time. The only thing that really might be imperative is to have it done right around the intersection and to the fire hall. When I put for the motion initially, Counsel Broadhead, and this might give you better perspective. I said, well, do we need to do this all? And why are you bringing it forward at this time? And I was explained to me that when they wrote it forward, it was with. You know, the budget's approved quite a few months before we get it. And it was approved with the idea that the fire hall would be done sooner than that. And so they just said, we're going to put it forward now. Because we think the firehouse coming sooner. And then, of course, the fire hall got delayed, but it was already in the budget. So that's kind of how it came to be where it is today. And so I said, that's when I said, okay, well, what do you need to do now? Let's do what we need to do now. We'll worry about the rest of it when the need actually justifies the expenditure. You know, because we are looking at these debts and these debts are going to come back to bite us. And that's what's happened already at this budget as we've had all these approvals for these previous debts and they've come back. And now we're facing the costs and the tax increases. So this is not just about handling it today. It's handling it for us and future councils. When we have it come back in the next year or two and say, we've got a higher tax increase because we borrowed twenty four million and we really didn't need to borrow that much because what needed to be done wasn't everything that was in that project. So that is why I'm asking to come back with a revised charter. And the reason why I'm asking for the revises and I'm giving it to Q two, but quite frankly, if they can come back with revised charter for January tenth, I'll be like, great. Like, I'm not, I'm not asking it to be delayed. I'm just trying to give them enough time so that they require it. They have it. But I'm, I want to have the revised charters that when we do go to the approval, we are confident about exactly what's being done because I have it three A and three B. And exactly how much we're really expecting it to cost. The last thing I want is a surprise again in the costs. The costs have gone from eighteen million to fifty two. I do not want another increase. And I want to be just very clear about what we're agreeing to so that we don't think we're agreeing to something more or less than what we are. And that way we actually know what the costs are. So when the borrowing buyer comes in, we can be confident. But that's the number that we're going to go forward with, and that's the end of it. But the challenge that I continue to face is that we are proving areas of road tripling. And the intersections past it that do not need to be done before twenty twenty five. And it might be convenient to say we're doing a bundle package, but we don't need to bundle it. And what we should be doing right now, especially with high interest rates, is not spending and going into debt more than we absolutely need to. We're not looking at two percent interest. We're looking at six and it could be higher by the time this thing comes forward. And that's all going to have an impact on it. So that's what I'm asking is just come for the new one. Come in three, three, A, three, B. It may be when three, B, three, B come forward that we say do both. And say, go for it, because I just want to see it broken down as the cost analysis. But I I what I don't like is when we saw a project charter that had no details attached to it in our budget. There was no designs, no breakdowns, nothing, and just said approve twenty four million dollars, please. So I want to see the details and see the breakdown and have a clear understanding and communication between what we're approving. And what's going to happen at the end. And we're not delaying anything that needs to really happen. And if administration wants it to move forward faster than the Q two, by all means, we're right here, slotted on a budget, on a council meeting. And we'll make this happen. And it's very possible it could come sooner than that. It's probably going to come in Q one because they've already got a bunch of design work. So that's I'm looking for. And as far as the IDP, as I mentioned, this is about. Working with the construction companies to potentially, you know, be motivated from both sides if we can find cost savings. And when I look and I go down that St. Albert Trail and you go over the overpass and I see how much extra cement's been put in. How much fancy concrete's been put in? I don't know how much more that increased the budget, but I know it was not inconsequential. And so I would like to see phase three brought for the different lens as to what the standards are for decorative items. And that's why I have there in the IDP. If you guys want to do it outside of the IDP, awesome. If you come back with the phase three and three B. That's again, at a reduced amount and said, well, maybe we won't do stamped concrete all the way down on the meridians and it's going to save us five hundred thousand dollars. Awesome. I don't care how we save that money. I just don't want to have to see these extraordinary expenditures that are difficult to justify to our taxpayers. As it's just a basic standard for what's being done there. It's just between landscaping and stamping concrete around landscaping. So that's what I'm asking for. I'm hoping we can just have this so that we all have a clear understanding. Because I personally did not feel comfortable at all approving twenty four million, but no details really attached to it, except for let's do phase three. After we've already gone over budget, almost tripled the original budget. That's it. Thanks.
Counsel, Counsel Kilik.
Thank you. I I'm really pleased to hear that. We that this change, proposed change that Counsel Hughes has brought forward is not going to impact the road into the fire hall. That would be the worst scenario ever, that we built a fire hall without a road. So. That the idea that phase three A could be done, it's simple. I shouldn't say simple, but it. The engineering team has said that the project plan can be split into, and I'm sure that's not simple, but so no impact to that. We'll have the road ready for the fire hall. We'll have it built to future Fowler Way standards. So it's. Going to fit with the overall plan. So with those three key things as as hearing that those are all achievable. This totally makes sense and and. My hope is that it can be brought forward, maybe even, you know, right at the beginning of Q two, so that we can get it. Tendered and out for construction in in the year without any any further delay. So this this is a good way to. Cost effectively move forward and service not only the road, but also the fire hall for.
Anything to close, Counsel Hughes? No, Counsel Broadhead jumped in. Sorry, go ahead, Counsel Broadhead.
I figured I should say something after my question. So I I appreciate the heart behind this again, but. I just go back to the to the process that the administration went through in order to do this and. And they evaluated this this project and the optimal way to do this is do it all at one time. And. Quite honestly, North St. Albert Trail has been dug up forever. And if we split it up again, it's going to be dug up even longer. And people, I tell you what, are getting tired. We talked a little bit about construction fatigue. It truly is on St. Albert Trail and and we need to do this to get the fire. Hall up and running. And and quite honestly, if we take the opportunity to build that third lane now rather than. Wait, why wouldn't we use the economies of scale and get people there building now? So appreciate the heart behind it and and, you know, but. Here we are, we're kind of sitting in judgment on on the decision process of of. Administration. Now, I get that that's part of the gig that we signed up for. That's part of our role. But I I don't know that we do that. Just sort of willy nilly. So in any case, and and perhaps that's the wrong word. We do that. We should just be very circumspect before we do that. And I appreciate that the motion had that thought behind it, but. In any case, that's why I'm opposing it.
I think few, Counsel Jolly, are good. All right, I'll just sort of. It was good conversation and good. Good idea, but I I'm kind of dittoing Counsel Broadhead that. Doing one side of the road and not the other. Just takes away the economies of scale and to extend the construction to an already fatigued city is just not something I wanted to do right now. So can support this at this time, Counselor Hughes to close.
Thanks. Actually, extending phase three to three A B actually extends it longer than if you just did three A and waited because the odds are you're not going to need to do it again for quite a few years. Three B isn't necessary for years, years and years. So we're jumping the gun. The other thing that I just want to remind you is like. There's a flaw in the budget process and it's not something that's easily to handle. And that is that administration has prepared the budget six months in advance, approve it and then present it. And things change in that six month time. And. When things change, they don't always change the budget accordingly. They just probably say, okay, it's okay, we'll go forward with it. And so it's up to us to say, okay, well, we either agree with what we're seeing or what we don't, but just taking it blindly and saying whatever administration brings forward is good. Well, we just unfunded the Oakmont Trail. They were huge unto doing that. We unfunded it. We disagreed with it. There wasn't a problem then when we did it. We just added a bunch of stuff here for different intersections. We disagreed with their priority scale again. That wasn't an issue. So deciding to just ask to see what it looks like in three A and B isn't an issue. I'm not even saying we're not going to do all twenty five million. All I'm saying is why don't we see what it looks like if we do A and B? And then Dean could come forward and say, hey, this is how much it costs for A. This is how much it costs for B. This is how much it will cost if we do it together. Okay, make a decision at that point. Because they just didn't give us any details at all. And in my opinion, they should have brought forth the two, three, A, B, and then the combination. And then said, which ones do you guys want to do? But they didn't. So the fact that they didn't means that that's flawless? No. It just means that, you know what, let's just ask them for that information, then make a decision. That's all. But please don't tell me that whatever the administration brings forward is gold. We just overruled them over and over and over again for the past four hours. And I'm not asking you to overrule. I'm just asking for more information before I make the decision. That's it. I think that we owe it to ourselves more agreeing to twenty five million dollars to at least have that discussion. So I'm asking if anybody's actually still thinking that they're going to put against this. This is a harmless motion. All I'm asking for is the information that we should have had to begin with. And the administration didn't change because they had information and they made the decision six months ago. That's it.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. That motion passes with Counsel Broadhead, I think, Jolly.
Voting's closed. That motion passes with Counsel Broadhead, I think Jolly goes so fast and myself opposed. Can I ask your indulgence guys to do one last? It's, um. The one that, uh, Counsel Kilik sent in on the weekend on fires zero two three, and then we'll be done capital. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, so Counsel Kirk, I'll get your read it in. We didn't get a background on this one, did we? Okay, so read it in and then we'll try to figure out what you're trying to do and ask some questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, and we got to.
It'll be quick.
He's got a meeting, so he's sticking around for us, so.
That capital project fires zero two, two, three for forty five thousand dollar be funded from the twenty twenty three capital budget.
All right, questions? We just figured what project charter you're trying to fund? Security for fire hall number two. So I was just, uh, briefing it and it's, uh. Video cameras and card lock keys. Okay, uh. Guess I'll start. Why didn't it make the cut?
Uh, a- again, I think broadly, um. It's important, but it wasn't as important as things that are sort of stacked in front of it. I will defer, uh, or perhaps ask Everett, uh, to chime in and talk a little bit about the specifics.
Excellent. I don't know if we need the specifics, Everett. We've got the project charter. I just want to know, like, the prioritization, you know, as you, you guys sit around in a room and figure out. What's funded and what's not.
No, but sorry, my apology. I meant the specifics in terms of, um, fires. The, the importance of it relative to everything else, right? So, um. I, I'm, I'm very comfortable in saying that it was through the rigorous prioritization process. Again, unfunded, but still important as are all the others.
That's, that's the problem. You ask, you ask Everett, he's going to say, this is really important.
He will.
So maybe Diane, yeah.
The only thing I will add is when you're, when you're looking at the ten year, um, growth plan in the budget document, we have it separated into funded and unfunded.
Yeah.
Although we're not providing actual numbers, they are listed in priority order. So the one is, is way down the list in terms of how it's scored based on the priority metrics. That being said, the priority matrix isn't, doesn't necessarily need to be the only thing.
No.
Um, that contributes to what makes something a priority. We, we do apply other lenses as, uh, not just the number that shows up, you know, we do apply other lenses. But what we don't apply is the political lens, um, because that's not our role. Um, so, so there is other things that, that go into it. The priority matrix, I would say, is a very important factor. And it probably marks the basis of most of our decisions, but we do consider other things. But this particular one fell quite far down the list. Um, as compared to the other projects based on that matrix.
Okay, good. So maybe Counsel Kilik, you need to tell us why you think something that they found low, you find high. Yeah.
Sure.
So we're going into debate, everyone.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to.
No, I don't see any questions.
Just general, general description.
Yeah.
So, wh- when I looked at this, it, it's provide. To provide a blue phone outside the fire station, which provides access for our residents in an emergency. Number one, resident driven. Security cameras inside the station and outside. So if a firefighter slips and falls or. In the station or, um. You know, the doors are open when the fire trucks leave and somebody sneaks in. We've got cameras there to, to take a look at this. We're going to have a camera. We're expanding the, the parking lot, uh, in the back. If a firefighter slips and falls on his way to his car after a twelve hour shift. And it's two AM in the morning. They're, they're going to see that. If somebody breaks into a car, they're going to see it. Um, the, the other driver is, is that. They have the old five button key push locks on the doors. And I just could not imagine that if council had that system on the doors coming into council chambers. And every time we wanted to come in, everybody else was allowed to card swipe. But we had to push those five buttons every time to get in the door. That's what we're asking our firefighters and their support team to do. It just made no sense to me. I, I recognize that it came down low on the list. Uh, but for forty five thousand dollars, when we can, we can provide those benefits, we, we ask our firefighters. To, to provide safety and security to our residents and we're, we're for forty five thousand dollars, we're not providing it to them. It just did not make sense to me. Hence, hence my motion to fund us for forty five thousand dollars.
Anyone else on debate? All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes. So we are at the end of capital. Um. We have, from my calculations, twenty one. Um, operating motions for Tuesday, for Thursday, and that's not including the ones that were passed on dissent. So. If we can try to get those done, we did about. Twenty today? No, seventeen today. So if we can get those done, then you guys can have Monday off. So maybe try this. We'll, we'll get dinner in again and we'll maybe go to seven on Thursday if that works for you guys. Okay, great. Run to your meeting there, Counsel Mackay. And we will see you guys all on Thursday.